Good afternoon, everyone. How am I? How am I?
Give me one second. We need the audio. Well. I can, can you unmute?
Okay, I'm unmuted. Is that good? Now we can start the discussion. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to the board meetings this afternoon. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejane. You can go to the corner of the room to get translation. We're heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we are here to listen to any public comment. There might be about our closed session items. Public get finished for public comment per speaker. The closed session items we were discussing tonight are conference with labor negotiator negotiators and public employee discipline dismissal, release, and complaint. Staff, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Gabrielle Michaletti.
Hold on one second, your mic.
Hello, President Smith Folds, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, Superior District, Superior District. Gabrielle Michaletti and one of the negotiators for UTR's bargaining team. I'm presenting a secret report today that was set in the district's and I have now been meeting. And the UTR's teachers are 21 in average, allowing them to help all their benefits. Forty eighteen, finishing up her 25 years of service. And then we're on five, hundreds of other products. So put the salary seven one, long, salary is seven ten, the date is sixteen, and ask them to stop out. I certainly think that there are very many hours twenty, or twenty of twenty to be involved. All this information to developing the
set someone would do.
What's suddenly not allowed by educators, which continues the cycle with thousands of students. This is unfortunately those that are in one schools experienced four years of their education under a revolving subs rather than a certificate educator who has four days of building connections to the community. We were told during mediation today, we were referring to this coming to the as traditional funds and plus facilities. So he finishes the other, then I encourage you to look this and remember that education simply does not happen without educators. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more public comment?
First, my comment is Michelle Milford. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Dr. Hurst and members of the board. I'm Michelle Milford, bargaining co-chair for the United Teachers of Richmond. As you may know, our UTR bargaining team and your negotiations team engaged in mediation today. The ball is now in your court and is up to the board to decide how things play out from here. We believe that it's time to recognize those closest to our students. A zero to no proposal is not respectful to our contribution to our students and community. As you make your decision tonight, please evaluate and consider all available options, including your BATNA, and hopefully we can reach an agreement. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, President Smith Folds, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, Board members and Superintendent Hurst. As the Executive Director of the United Teachers of Richmond, I urge you in closed session today to take very seriously your responsibility as the stewards of the resources. Our community and taxpayers in the state of California have afforded to our district to provide instruction and quality education to West County students. Right now, we're at a crossroads. We're at the almost the end of the school year. We've not received any meaningful proposal at all of any value from your management bargaining team. And we are reaching the point where a mediator is going to release the parties to fact finding if we're not able to reach an agreement. And frankly, we can't reach an agreement when what we get from your side is zero. Zero is not respectful of the contribution of West County educators to students and families in this district. And it's not what is appropriate here, given the extraordinary resources you hold in reserves and the extraordinary resources you continue to receive. Please review your priorities and remember that the program of the district is teaching and those that provide the program are teachers and other educators. They cannot be last. There are thousands of students in West County that have no certificated educator in front of them today. And the proposals that UTR has made are a pathway to staffing our classrooms so that every West County student can receive a quality public education from a permanent certified educator. Please don't pass the buck and send us down the road to further contention and adversarialness. Let's stop the madness and reach an agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone, for your public comment. We will reconvene for open session at six thirty tonight. Thank you. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. First, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone who's willing and able, please rise.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move to the land acknowledgement. Staff, do we have that video or not? Yes, thank you.
Evidence of the land we currently occupy. We represent that we are presently on the lands of the Chilcheno, Huacma, Carribean, and Longo people and acknowledge them as the person's evidence of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you very much. I now will leave the late, I now will read the labor and body recognition. I acknowledge that the burden of the environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that black and brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. Also acknowledge the continued contribution of labor of survivors over the centuries to today. All immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. Dr. Hurst, will you please do roll call?
Yes, ma'am. President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone present.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, I'm present.
Trustee Phillips.
Present.
Trustee Christian.
Good evening, present.
Student trustee, Abdu Gahparav.
Good evening, present.
And trustee Palkar. Trustee Palkar is not here at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hurst. Dr. Hurst, do we have a report out or ratification of closed session?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Regarding item number A two two, it was voted unanimously to approve the, I'm sorry. It was a four member vote, one person absent, to approve the resignation agreement with employee ID number one, two, one, four, one, five. Classified employee resignation date, June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The roll call vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. Trustee Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Board will now go to item B six, public comment. Again, how to address the board. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not other otherwise on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in West Contra Costa Unified School District. Public comment will last approximately sixty minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCC USD public comment form. Or participating by Zoom, individuals need to raise their hand in the Zoom app right now during the public comment time. Staff, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Jason Minton.
Thank you. All right, very good. Ooh, now it's on. All right, thank you very much. My name is Jason Minton. I have kids in the school district and I'm a resident of Penole. Anyway, I wanted to speak about Principal Kibbie Kleiman, Kleiman from Penole Valley High. We had a discussion of this extensively at last meeting. We're here, I think some of you were. And I would like to raise a couple of points. One is that I do not believe that during the closed session, when you voted to reassign the principal to a teacher position, that you had completed the public comment. And I think, I know we went for two hours after you had voted, but I think even before you did not complete public comment at that time. And there were people online who do believe that they were expecting to make a public comment on that subject and were not able to do so. So that's a point. If you're, I don't know a lot about governance. I don't know a lot about school boards and I don't know a lot about education, da, 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 da. But anyway, that seems to be an important point that maybe you could reconsider. Secondly, and more important to me, this seems to be a matter that is between the HR department with some issue that we don't know and Mr. Kleiman. And you're punishing him by reassigning him. But what is actually happening is you're collectively punishing the entire school, the entire community of people that I know there and that many of us have been spoke here for two hours last time, but it is a collective punishment, which is really just egregiously wrong. And I would like you to find another way to target whatever punishment it is that you need to do. And then I'm going to skip forward because my time's almost done. I'll be back here on April tenth, which is your next meeting. I've got an agenda item in the closed session to this further discuss this so we can continue. And I would like to thank you very much for your attention and Ms. Smith Folds for some conversations and some interactions between last meeting and this. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Maria Brown. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name is Maria Brown. I'm, I'm a resource specialist for West Contra Costa Unified School District. And I'm speaking on behalf of the virtual program, which is currently at risk of losing multiple staff members. I would just like to identify some of the assumptions that a lot of people are making about the virtual program. And that a lot of people do believe that it may be a last chance school solely for credit recovery or that it may have been developed for school, for students with poor attendance or teachers who don't want to work. And would like to highlight some of the truths about the program and some of the benefits that I have identified. For students, many of those students have alternate learning preferences, just as us as adults prefer a variety of work shifts. There are students with a variety of social, emotional, as well as health needs that can be prioritized by the teachers if needed. And then their academics can be completed without becoming overwhelmed. I have students who prefer and benefit working one-on-one without some of the peer influence and distractions of some of their peers. And then as a teacher, I can even honestly say that I didn't understand or even know what to expect until I experienced it firsthand as a teacher working there. There really is just a more personalized teaching approach. And we are able to customize the learning plans to fit each student's needs and have just a more close relationship that's developed with our families and the students. And those relationships that we develop just kind of foster a little bit more trust and student growth, both emotionally as, as well as academically. That's it.
Our next public comment is Amanda Foster.
Good evening, everyone. I spoke to you last month about the amazing work Vista K twelve Virtual Academy does. And then we lost three teaching positions. We deserve better. Our students deserve better. The cuts proposed to our site will force a reorganization of our school away from best practices. A quote from the California Department of Ed, elements of exemplary independent study, quote, "At the secondary level, independent study teachers specialize in their area or areas of expertise to provide direct instruction to pupils, whether in classes, small groups, labs, or individually. Such instructions provided either onsite or online," end quote. "The cuts will take away three experienced teachers who are specialized in core content. Three teachers who currently provide direct instruction in core content." "The cuts are coming from a budget crisis that this district seems to consistently cycle through. Who suffers? The students. Our students deserve a stable and experienced independent study staff. Our students deserve supervising teachers who are also content specialists in A to G requirements. Our students deserve to continue the relationships they have built with these teachers. Relationships and community is at the heart of independent studies. Vista is a safe place for students who need it, for students who want it, for students who have been downtrodden in traditional settings and now see the light that education is in their lives, their futures are illuminated. Please reconsider. Our students deserve better. Thank you."
Our next public comment is Ms. Barneel Molly. Please unmute yourself.
Hi. Can you, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. I'm also here representing Vista K through twelve. I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. K through K, K through twelve Virtual Academy, parents, students, and teachers that are concerned about the decision to cut three high school teachers. We really don't understand the rationale. It's destiny or high school. You're forcing a restructure that we spent three years building and completely, completely changed. Our students deserve to keep their teachers and our students deserve to have experienced teachers at every grade level. So I understand the district has to make tough decisions, but this is not the right one. The decision was focused on money, when it should be focused on practices for student learning and well-being. When you talk about brown and black students, most of my students are going to be affected are brown and black. And I really hope you guys reconsider this decision that was made. I'm not sure if it was made with these things in mind, but we really beg and plead that you guys reconsider cutting these three teaching positions. And yeah, thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Mark Harringer.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Harringer. I'm the managing director for the East Bay for Go Public Schools. I'm here tonight to speak about the revised Educator Effectiveness Block Grant, which outlines many types of professional development that will be supported by the grant. We at Go Public Schools are concerned with one small but important element. For literacy, it calls for a high-quality, comprehensive, balanced literacy curriculum and instruction for all grades. We propose a small but significant modification to strike the word balanced. Balanced literacy, of course, sounds wonderful, but the name can be misleading and the practices leave many of our students not learning how to read. The district is currently convening a literacy task force, which I'm sure you're understanding of. We ask that you do not place handcuffs on this work by specifically committing the district to providing professional development in balanced literacy for the remaining years of this grant. We ask for this minor but important modification to allow for more flexible and room to begin to make the shift toward instruction for more fully aligned with evident-based practices and to allow the work of the literacy task force to take its course. Balanced literacy is at odds with what research and evidence demonstrates are the most effective ways of teaching students to read and write. And many elements of balanced literacy are not aligned with the California State ELD or ELD, ELA and ELD framework. We hope that before you vote for this item, you make a small but important revision and delete the label balanced to leave more room for future alignment and growth in the district's approach to literacy instruction. While we know our request is a small word, this word can carry significant ramifications for future professional development and instructional opportunities. By amending this one word, you give yourself optimal flexibility to create the literacy environment that all our students need and deserve. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sandeep Sarajbanse. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking my call. I'm a parent of Vista Virtual. I have three young children attending the schools there, fourth, sixth, and ninth grade levels. My kids came to Vista right at the end of pandemic. This was brought to us, we didn't even know this school existed. We were in traditional school setting. And as soon as my children started attending this school, this was a complete game changer for us and made our kids completely independent. My kids are now learning life skills at school. I mean, I never had that growing up. They're getting time management, project management, and independence and responsibilities that they wouldn't get in another school setting. I'm watching this live every day with my kids. Their teachers care. They spend one-on-one time with these kids. And whenever I need help or my kids need help, they are willing to serve. I just have to send a quick text to one of the teachers and they show up, whether it's six o'clock at night or seven o'clock at night. They will help my child and I will never get that in any other setting. And if I'm hearing that you're taking this away from my kids or any other kids that attend this school, this is appalling. This is absurd. Just because we're cutting budgets or we're trying to make some kind of budget around this? Oh, my goodness. We're taking teachers that are golden gooses for our children. Please make the right decision here. Don't take the teacher away. Don't look at the numbers. Look at the people behind them that make a difference in all these kids' lives. I am begging you. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Alon Harrison.
Thank you. Good evening, board. How y'all doing today, this evening? I just want to thank y'all for Demetrio, trustee Demetrio, for the wonderful email that you're going to be meeting with us regarding our Swahili language school. Thank you. Woo-hoo. And to all the other board members who met with us already. And I just wanted to bring to y'all attention, last night at our ASAP meeting, we saw the horrible data around our children in the district. Can we please revisit the resolution? I know y'all put it on y'all shelf like dust in good faith, but I think if we combine it with the superintendent strategic plan and pull some things out of there, maybe we can come to some better data for our children in the district. We seen IREDDI and we seen the climate and it wasn't good for our children. So can we please revisit the resolution? I think that would be a good way to include the community in the solution of changing that data because it wasn't good for our children. And also I would like to thank you all for really listening to parents and making a difference. I've seen a lot of things that you guys are doing to include the APACs. I want to thank that and thank our, our, what is our, our liaison, Othree, for meeting with us and listening to us. And we, we still have a lot of work to do, but I do see effort from the boards and the cabinet level people working with us. Like I said, still a lot of work to do, but can we please, you know, work on improving that data and more parent involvement and inclusion? Thank you, I'm complete.
Our next public comment is Jay Hennington. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Next public comment is Maureen Toms. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Toms and I am a, an alumni of Penole Valley High School and a parent of two alumnus and also the mayor of the city of Penole. I joined your meeting last, your last meeting at five o'clock to speak before the closed session regarding Principal Kibbie Kleiman. Although my name was called to speak, the Zoom administrator did not send me the prompt to be heard. Several other members of the public experienced the same problem. Other parents were told that they could speak on the issue six thirty. Therefore, the board considered the item in closed session without benefit of all of the public comment that you have heard since your decision. And for that reason, I'm asking you to reconsider. If you could re-agendize this item and take into consideration all of the public comment that you have heard thus far, and perhaps that may sway your decision that perhaps there's another way. Perhaps there's some, you know, some discipline or some mitigating circumstances that you can consider to keep Mr. Kleiman at Penole Valley High School. I appreciate all of the communication that I have had with the board, board members so far. I do understand closed session issues, but I'm just asking you regarding the procedures that perhaps they were not followed the way that the Brown Act requires and the way that the school board also strives to do. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Our next public comment is Maureen Bowles.
Just one second, we need to turn your mic on. I'm going to have to find my place. I'm here tonight to speak about Kibbie Kleiman, the principal of Penole Valley High School. This board should re-agendize the issue of terminating Kibbie Kleiman, listen to the voices of the students and parents, and put the matter back up for a vote after careful, thoughtful consideration of the support that he has in our community. A few weeks ago, four of you on the school board voted to dismiss Kibbie as the principal of our high school. One of you voted to keep him. Since one of you voted to keep him, all of you could have. This means that you made a choice. You were not required or bound by some policy or rule that would dictate your decision. It was your choice, as evidenced It was your choice, as evidenced by your vote. Your board president, Penole's Area 1 elected trustee, Jamila Smith Folds, has been going to city council meetings explaining that she's not free to discuss the issue, which she's discussing, since it is a private personnel matter. Kibbe has done nothing wrong. He's an open book and would welcome discussing this publicly. This issue is being discussed on Nextdoor, Facebook, Instagram, and other social media. The public is furious with you. The whole way that you handled the last meeting was unprofessional, uncaring, and very deceitful. To many students, you appear as dictators. For many in our community, it was the first time that they had ever attended a board meeting. You've angered and lost the trust of an entire community before they even got to know you. A lot of them have told me that they will never attend another board meeting. Kibbe has been a valued member of the school district for 35 years, with 10 of those being at Penole Valley High School. It is shameful that this district is hiding behind the cloak of employment being at-will to use as the reason for his reassignment. You have a reason. You are simply not willing to share that reason with the public because then you will be subject to the scrutiny of subjective judgment. Re-agendize, reconsider, and vote again, valuing your constituents. After all, you are elected officials with three legal complaints filed against this district for violating the civil rights of students for not having teachers for them. You should be focused on that rather than reassigning Kibbe. Good night.
Our next public comment is Jessica Cecil. Please unmute yourself.
Hi there. Thank you for your time tonight. I do appreciate it. My name is Jessica Cecil, and I'm from Vista Virtual Academy. I am one of the teachers that is being cut, and I would like the board to please reconsider because this is not only affecting me and the other three, the other two teachers, but also our students, who we've spent a great amount of time developing our relationships with them and their families, for really being with them since the beginning of Vista Virtual Academy. It's such a disservice to our students, and we truly love them and want to be there for them, and we want to continue these relationships with them. I believe that to be a better teacher, we need to really deeply know our students. And having this one-on-one setting with them has been, like our parents said before, a great service to these students. They get an opportunity to really develop and grow in ways that a normal setting wouldn't give them. They wouldn't have the opportunity to necessarily get this one-on-one attention. And I've seen students who have really been through terrible times grow and become star students because of what we do and how we have such deep relationships with them. So I, again, I thank you for your time, and I really do want you to reconsider because you will save our school. And that's simple, is that we can be better teachers. We can provide better for our Black and Brown students. We can provide better for all of our students. So please, I deeply ask that you really think about what we're doing for our students and how you can help them have a better future. Because, you know, we really appreciate your time, and we do not want to leave our students and our families. So thank you for hearing me tonight. Thank you for hearing our families. And thank you for hearing the other teachers on our staff. We appreciate it.
Our next public comment is Whitney Gresswald.
Good evening, school board. I know you all are familiar with my face at this point, coming to make public comment about MRAD. Here again to make some similar points. As a parent and a parent of a child in the West Contra Costa Unified School District, it's very unfortunate to go to my child's school and consistently be confronted with just locked facilities. The school is the only place that my kids can play safely. We don't have any other parks that are walkable in our region. And it's for this reason that I really dove into this whole MRAD and MRAD Engineers Report, and also just understanding, like, the tax dollars that we pay that, in theory, are supposed to support and facilitate our access to these outdoor recreation facilities that are really a space of unlimited possibilities for community building, which is something that is very dear to my heart. So as you all are aware, the upcoming 24-25 MRAD Engineers Report will soon be prepared. And there's just a few questions that I hope you all can highlight with SCI Consulting, who prepares the report. The first of which is, will there be links in the report where the public can see which facilities our money is being spent on? There's a lot of new fences in this school district, and I want to know that my money is not being spent on fences that keep me out of these areas and my children out of parks. Additionally, will some of the calculations for access be updated to reflect reality? Right now, they're not at all accurate. It says that the public is supposed to have access 67% of daylight hours. Our access level is like 0 to 10%, so that's vastly not reality. And then, will the language about public benefit be updated? Thank you.
Our next public comment is Lisa DeCastro. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa DeCastro. I'm going to follow up on Whitney's previous comment. I am also commenting to ask the district to please act in compliance with MRAD and the original intent of Measure E. We would greatly appreciate more transparency on where our tax dollars are going. My kids attend district elementary and middle schools. And fortunately, when they were toddlers back in the day, school campuses like Sheldon were completely open and accessible to the community. They learned to ride bikes there. We had so many playdates with community neighbors that we met. And now, fast forward to 2024, I'm really disappointed about the access and equity around open space, really, for the families and community members that live in our neighborhood. I'm also going to touch a little bit on turf fields. I have soccer player kids. And the only place in May Valley with turf fields are at Dianza and Penole Middle. And when those are closed to the public, there is absolutely nowhere to go for kids to play soccer. The closest fields after our schools are Making Waves Academy or driving down to Arinda. So again, please, please, consider more work around MRAD with the community. I'd love to see all our families being able to enjoy our facilities and really, you know, improve our public health and our, and our communities here in May Valley. Thanks so much.
Our next public comment is Jess Garatkar. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Daisy. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Next public comment is Ruth Salada. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Salada, mother of Isabella Salada, a student from Vista Virtual Academy. And I'm speaking tonight about the three teachers from Vista Virtual Academy. We're sad about the news, and we appreciate if you can reconsiderate this. This is going to affect our kids and the teachers especially. And I would like to say, my daughter, she has the teacher, Mrs. Molly. She's a, she's a great teacher. Please, appreciate it. Do reconsiderate this. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Mel Molly. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm also here representing Vista K-12 Virtual Academy. I just want to say, yes, if you can please reconsider cutting the three high school teachers, sorry. Our high school is, literally has a waitlist. And you know what that means? That means that West Contra needs us. We are needed by the families and the students, your students, West Contra Costa students. And we are like a beacon of light to these students and these families. Where the one-on-one approach that we have with the families and the students is unsurpassed. You will not have this at any traditional setting. We are a choice school for them. There's no other option for these kids, and then they come to us, and we are their only hope. So I've seen students go from the darkest times, and now they have hope. So please reconsider. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Cake Burkhardt. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. I just got through with the Measure X meeting and proposed that the senior programs that are being sponsored by the school district continue with the collaboration of the adult school. It's a wonderful program, and sometimes, one day a week, for an adult away from their home, with their peers, just relaxing, makes the difference of being able to stay in your home and not in a facility. So I hope that we'll be able to continue our three programs with the adult school. And congratulations on having a new principal. We look forward to working with Mr. Brooks and having a fruitful time in the future. Thank you. Good evening.
Our next public comment is Soko. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, everybody. My name is Soko Petty Lutu. I'm a sophomore student from Miravista Academy. I'm speaking up for the teachers that could possibly lose their role. Mrs. Sale is my personal teacher, and she has been a big part of not just my education, but my personal life as well. Sorry, I'm shaking. She has gotten me through so much that I could possibly not imagine losing her as a teacher. She is one teacher that I met that actually cares about her students and would do anything for them. She has been a big impact in my life, and I'm saying this genuinely from my heart. Please don't take away this opportunity away from her, including the other teachers and me. Thank you.
Next public comment is Daisy. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Daisy. I'm a ninth grader at Vista Virtual High School. I've been going to Vista Virtual for three years. In-person school has never worked for me, and growing up, teachers had always looked down at me and told me I would never be able to become anything. But as soon as I started going to Vista Virtual High School, this has all changed. The teachers actually have one-on-one sessions with the students throughout the school week to help with assignments or social and emotional problems. I never had this in a traditional school setting, and I'm so thankful for this school and the hard-working, wonderful, caring teachers that work here. Before this school, I was at a 4, I was at a 1.0 GPA. And now, I average at a 4.0 GPA and taking college courses for two years now, all while being a ninth grader. I couldn't have done it without Ms. Molly and her support. She helped me when I was at my lowest, and she never let me give up on anything. Even the days when she was super busy, she would still take the time to help me. She even offers to help during school breaks. What teacher does that? I will tell you, it's Ms. Molly and the teachers at Vista Virtual who actually care about their students. Think about it. If you lose these wonderful, hard-working teachers, you will not, you will not only lose all your students, but your district will fall apart. Please make the right decision and think through this. That's all I have to say.
Our last public comment is Jess Garatkar. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I am a student of Virtual Vista High School. I am a junior. I don't agree with this cut because my teacher, Mrs. Sale, has to leave that actually cares, helps, and checks in on me with my work and how I am doing. Also helps me with my subjects and gave me the understanding that I can reach out to her whenever, knowing I can get help on my work. My teacher always helps, no matter what time or day. Virtual Vista is a good place for me because since I came to the school, I've seen growth in my education, knowledge, and grade. Virtual Vista is the best place for me because I feel safe and I can concentrate more better. I will break, it will break my heart to see a good teacher leave. Lastly, to the board, please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Before we move on, board, to agenda item B7. Dr. Hurst, can you, you have a comment that you need to make? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. I actually have two comments I want to share. One is with reference to the public comment on the Maintenance and Recreation Assessment District, or MRAD. Then also, the request to strike the word "balanced" on one of the items that's going to be before the public. So I wanted to just share on the MRAD is that we wanted to just clarify to the community that the community has access to facilities after school through dusk, Monday through Friday. Also, I wanted to share that unfortunately, due to financial constraints, we're not able to have them open on the weekends right now. But as we continue to look at partnerships and future funding, that can be considered. So we wanted to clarify that. And I wanted to share with Ms. Neely Johnson, our chief academics officer. She actually is going to share about the request to strike the word "balanced" on an item.
Good evening, President Smith Folds, trustees, and cabinet, and West Contra Costa Unified School District community. I want to say that, first of all, the Educator Effectiveness Grant is a multi-year grant, and it supports professional development across our system. And so although the curriculum instruction is one component, it also supports training for SEL, for our classified employees, as well as any employee that needs training on possibly CPI and other things. So I just wanted to say that it is not just for curriculum, but it is for professional development for all of our staff. But in the case of removing the word "balanced," as I know that right now, the state is going through a process where we are re-looking at our framework for literacy and also re-looking at our curriculum. And so I am okay with striking the word. We believe that we want all of our students to be able to read, write, and think critically, especially at a time that we, as Americans, are facing. So we are okay with striking that one word. And we will continue to work in the literacy task force to come together to create the best recommendation for our students in West Contra Costa Unified School District.
Thank you so much, CEO Johnson. Thank you, Superintendent Hurst. Board, we, that item is coming up later in the agenda if we want to have more questions or comments. Board, let's go to agenda item B7, Agenda Review and Adoption. Any corrections? Do we have any problem? See, no objections. We're going to adopt the agenda. Agenda is adopted. Let's move to item B8, Approval of Minutes for February the 7th, 2024. Any corrections? Trustee Ruckler, go ahead.
Thank you. I do have a correction to the February 7th, 2024 minutes, which is F1 and F2 were pulled from the agenda and were not heard. But if you go down and you look at it, it says that the board heard those presentations and asked questions, and we did not. And I will send that in if it's approved. Thank you. And they're on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ruckler. Any other corrections to the agenda? No, without objection? And with the correction that trustee Ruckler made, can we approve the minutes? No, without objection. And with the correction that Trustee Reckler made, can we approve the minutes? Minutes approved. Thank you so much. We are now moving to B9, which is Resolution on Women's History Month, Resolution Number 2324-60. Ms. Forrest, this is your item, please, ma'am.
Thank you, Board President, Trustees, and Superintendent. Whereas women make history every day and should be celebrated every day. And whereas we have stood on each other's shoulders to achieve political success from Carol Mosley Braun, Maisy Hirono, Tammy Duckworth, Catherine Cortez Masto, Patsy Takamoto Mink, Mary Rose O'Car, Sharice Davids, First African-American Congresswoman Shirley Chisholm, to First Female, First Black Female Vice President Kamala Harris of Jamaican and Indian descent, to the First Trustees serving Area 1 and Area 5 of the West Contra Costa Unified School District, for President Jamila Smith Folds and Trustee Leslie Reckler. Now, therefore, be it resolved that March is designated as Women's History Month to honor their contributions and that the West Contra Costa Unified School District honors the contributions that women have made throughout history and commit to support efforts to improve education and opportunities for girls and women.
Thank you so very much. Board, can I get a motion?
President's going to pull a motion.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Board, any comments? Trustee Christian, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to say, you know, to the Women's History Month, we stand on, I mean, women paid a great sacrifice throughout this country and have done a lot and it's so much throughout history. And so I want to say congratulations to all women out here in this country who did a lot, you know, to make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Board, I'm not sure. And Ms. Forrest, please help me with this. I'm not sure, but would the board be okay adding Mayor Irma Anderson's name in the resolution? Any objections to adding Mayor Irma Anderson's name in this resolution?
No, we just have to make an amendment, which I think would be accepted and seconded.
Okay. So with that amendment, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoyt, is your motion still stand? Trustee Christian, do you still second that with the addition of Mayor Anderson? Thank you so much. Board, any other comments? Ms. Forrest, would you add that part to it, please? Thank you so much. Let's go to the vote. Trustee Pal Carr, your vote, please, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abdu Ghapar Boor.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoyt?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The resolution passes. Thank you. Board, we're now moving to C consent items. Anything that we're pulling? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to pull C3 Educator Effectiveness Block Grant Revision. And I would like to pull C7 Contracts. Thank you.
All of the contracts or a particular one?
Yes, thank you all.
Anyone else? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Sorry, a quick question for C3. Excuse me. Is Trustee Reckler pulling it for that balanced language or for another reason?
It looks like she's pulling it for the language.
Is it possible for us to leave it on consent? And then one of us makes a motion for all of the items except the contracts, but that the motion say remove every item except contracts and strike the word "balanced" from, so we don't have to have a discussion about it? Because I was going to do the same thing, but if that's the only reason, I think we can include that in the motion.
So, Trustee Reckler, the only reason you're pulling is because you want to strike the word "balanced", which the staff has said they're striking the word "balanced", correct?
Yes, that's correct. I want it officially recorded, but if you're, I'm fine with, I'm fine with the amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Trustee Phillips, to your point is, say, we're accepting the consent items except for item number seven, which is being pulled, and for item three, we are agreeing to strike the word "balanced"?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Everyone's in agreement? Do I need a motion?
That is the motion.
Perfect. Somebody second?
Reckler will second.
Perfect. Any comments? No? To the vote. Trustee Pal Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee, help me to make sure I'm saying this right. So.
Abdu Ghaparov.
Abdu Ghaparov.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoyt?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you, board. We are now moving to agenda item D, the Superintendent Communication. Go ahead, sir. This is your item.
Thank you. As we pull that up, as we're pulling this up, I do want to just share with the board and the community. I know last board meeting, I spoke about the DC trip that was being sponsored. I just wanted to just clarify with everyone that that DC trip is not a district-sponsored trip. It is a community-sponsored trip. We also wanted to clarify that we have directed staff that they are not to take that community-sponsored trip during school hours. And also, we've directed staff that they are not to utilize the district's name in any way or the Montferrico Program. So we wanted to clarify that for all parties that are listening. And as we pull this up, we wanted to share, we do have a memoriam that we would like to read. And it shares, the district would like to take time to recognize the contributions of members of our school community who have passed away. We regret to inform you that Esther Lopez, a retired instructional aide, passed away. Ms. Lopez worked for the district for 35 years and retired in 2015. Our thoughts and prayers go to the family and friends during these challenging times. Please join me in the moment of silence. Thank you very much. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Academic Officer, Mrs. Sonya Neely Johnson, for a presentation.
Thank you and good evening again. I'm going to ask the College and Career Department to come up. And yes, let's give them a big hand. They just submitted yesterday on time, a big grant, a Golden Gate Partnership Grant, so they deserve a big hand. Thank you. And also, thank you for being here this evening. They are going to do an overview of really celebrating career and technical education. So I'm going to ask each of them to introduce themselves and then start their presentation.
Good evening, President Smith Folds, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoyt, Trustee Reckler, Trustee Christian, Trustee Phillips, students, cabinet members, and families and community in our school district. My name's Alicia Ascaraga, Work-Based Learning Coordinator. I'm joined by my amazing colleagues Ariel Kirshenbaum, Coordinator of CTE, and Danny Maxwell, Coordinator of Work-Based Learning. And collectively, we're your CTE team. CTE, or Career Technical Education, is one arm of the College and Career Department. We also encompass VAPA, Visual and Performing Arts, A through G requirements, and counseling. Next slide, please. Collectively, we are a group of incredibly committed individuals who really work in the best interest of the students and the communities that we serve. Next slide. Before we get into our presentation, just a little think time. Think back to when we were younger, grade school. What did you want to be when you grew up? Chances are, none of us in this room envisioned where we are today. But what happened was, along the way, we all experienced opportunities that ultimately changed the trajectory of our careers, maybe our lives. And for us, that's the potential of CTE in our district. Next slide. Our objectives today, too. Why is CTE important? And what does it look like in California and in West Contra Costa? Next slide, please. So why CTE? Well, research data suggest students in CTE programs have increased engagement and decreased incidences of behavior. They graduate at a higher rate, they are less likely to drop out, and more importantly, they are more likely to complete their A through G requirements. With over 3,500 students in our CTE programs, we have a significant opportunity to support our students. Next slide. Oftentimes, when we talk about career technical education, you will hear us passionately talk about the 1-2-7 ratio. And the 1-2-7 ratio is this. For every occupation, for every one occupation, there's one job available that requires a master's degree or higher. There are two jobs available that require a bachelor's degree and seven jobs available that require a certificate or a two-year degree. We share that with students and families and community members, not to discourage going to college, but rather to highlight and inform students that there's no linear path to success, that it all depends on what are their goals after high school and how collectively can the College and Career Department support those goals. And more importantly, for the CTE team, it's really about while we have students in our CTE programs, how can we provide opportunities and experiences similar to the ones you and I had? How can we provide those experiences that might ultimately change the trajectory of our students' career choices and maybe their lives, too? For us, it's not college or career. It's what is your life path after graduation? And what can we do to help you reach those goals?
All right. So that's a little bit about why CTE. Now I'm going to tell you what is CTE. And Alicia, I think everyone in this room knew they wanted to be either a school board member or a cabinet member of a school district. So. Hi, everyone. I'm Ariel Kirshenbaum, Coordinator of Career Technical Education. So my job is to really tell you what is CTE, Career Technical Education. And essentially, it is a program of study that can start as early as when we start talking to young children about what they want to do when they grow up. When we talk about CTE in school, we're talking about specific sequences of courses, particularly at the high school level, but also in the middle school level, and excitingly with Dr. Hurst's support going down into the early grades. Career Technical Education in California is rooted in 15 different industry sectors. And those industry sectors are meant to be, or determined by California, to be the sectors that are high wage, high growth. And our duty as CTE providers is to provide programs that are locally rooted in the workforce and locally rooted in labor development. So a quick check for understanding, if we were in the Central Valley, what types of CTE programs would you expect we would see based on the labor market? I'm hearing farming, agriculture. Exactly right. Very good. Okay, next slide. I do want to note that CTE has evolved a lot in its time. So we think of often folks in this room, we went to school a little bit ago. We think of trade school and vocational school. That is still a part of CTE. But I do want to name that historically, there's a pretty problematic past of tracking students. And I want to say that's not what CTE is today, and that's certainly not what CTE is in West Contra Costa Unified. Historically, we might think of trade school as for students who are, and I quote, like, "not college material", and I'm putting that in air quotes for those who are listening. One, we're not about that at all. CTE is for all students because everyone's going to have to pay bills at some point, and that's going to involve having a career. We're here for supporting students for college and career. Also, I want to highlight that the academic expectations are high. And one of the ways that we show that is that all of our CTE classes in the school district allow students to receive A through G credit, which is the UCCSU credit that makes them eligible to apply to a four-year. Next slide. Just a little bit digging into the curriculum at CTE in our school district. So when we talk about career technical education, we talk about three things, and they're up there on the slide in purple, blue, and green. And the purple is career awareness. What jobs are out there? Right? If anyone here has talked to a six-year-old, seven-year-old, eight-year-old, what jobs do they think exist, no exist? Shout them out loud so people on Zoom can hear. Doctor, lawyer, police person, right? Awesome. So career awareness is helping students get from there, where they know about three jobs, four jobs, five jobs, to all the jobs that exist today, some of them in the room that certainly I don't think most six-year-olds would name. So career awareness starts as early as students are learning about jobs. In our district, in elementary school, that looks like teacher-led activities in the classroom through various different curricula. Namely, I want to shout out our science curricula, which do highlight STEAM careers and STEM careers, as well as FabLab experiences, PLTW launch, and School Links, which I'll talk about in the next slide. We also talk about work-based learning experiences, which is really any experience that's introducing a student to a real-world professional and what jobs are like. So in elementary years, that can be guest speakers, field trips, dressed like a professional. As we get older, so we're moving from the purple into the blue. We're still in the purple. We're still learning about new careers. But we're also starting to explore what careers are like. I think I want to be a doctor. I think I want to be a nurse. Oh, no, I just saw blood and I fainted. Right? That's career exploration, discovering, oh, maybe that thing I thought I wanted to do. I got a taste of what it's like. Maybe I do like it. Maybe I don't like it. That's really what we're trying to get for our middle school students. We're getting their hands dirty with different careers. We do that specifically with two different career classes in the middle school years. One is the College and Career Readiness Class, which exposes students to 18 different careers. For two weeks, they're a dentist. For two weeks, they're a fashion designer. For two weeks, they're a video game designer. They kind of get a taste of what it's like. And the other is PLTW, which stands for Project Lead the Way, Gateway to Technology, which exposes students to a bunch of different careers in STEM and engineering. The curriculum is listed there, as well as work-based learning experiences, same career days, guest speakers, et cetera. And then we're moving forward into the career preparation, which is the green on your screen. And that's really giving students the skills while they're in high school so that they can leave high school with more skills that would make them eligible for like more than an entry-level position after high school. That's the goal. And I can't get into all the curriculum there because we offer over 60 unique Career Technical Education Career Technical Education classes in our high schools. I'll say that again. That's over 60 unique CTE courses because they're really industry-driven. And the work-based learning that my colleague Danny will talk about in a moment gets a little bit more specific with things like internships, field trips, mock interviews, job shadows, industry certification. Next slide. And then last for me, before I hand it off, I'll share that we're really excited in the CTE department that we are in our first year of launching School Links, which is our K-12 College and Career Curriculum that all students in our district have access to via Clever, where they have their own profile. And essentially here, this is our, one of our curriculum options that's really guiding students through that whole continuum of career awareness, career exploration, career preparation, with things like embedded lessons for students in the early years, strengths finder, what are you good at? What do you like? Then to secondary, supporting students with mentor videos, career interest surveys. We even post an internship job board. Every opportunity that's local, we post on the site for students to take a look at. There's virtual reality college tours. And then finally, if students are choosing to apply to college, it also supports them with that college application process with things like searching for scholarships, comparing financial aid reports, and requesting letters of rec. And lastly, I'm going to hand it off to my colleague Danny Maxwell to talk about CTE in our high schools by industry.
Thank you, Ariel, and good evening, everyone. So as Ariel said, that we are expanded through all grades, elementary through high school. This slide is focusing on our high school CTE programs. And you'll see over 12 different industry sectors. We have a total of 25 pathways related and connected to CTE, with the most being our health pathway, as was described before. But you'll see a wide variety of different industry sectors. Next slide. And then taking a look, similar information, just with a different view. We have a breakdown of all of the different pathways and academies in our high schools. And really, what we have are two models in West Contra Costa. We have a California Partnerships Academy model, which is essentially a school within a school. That's That's where a small learning community with a career and industry theme are co-horted and stay together from 10th grade on through graduation. And in addition to their CTE courses, they are having and sharing the same English and history classes as well. And then the other model is our pathway, which is a two-to-three course sequence in the industry sector theme. And that is to lead into an industry certification or a path to either a two-year or four-year degree option with the emphasis on that industry sector as well. And so what Alicia, myself, and Ariel all do in collaboration is bring these to life through real-life experiential experiences. And so really, essentially, that is what work-based learning is, is real-life application of what they're learning inside the classroom. And so to do that, we really collaborate largely with our community and industry partners across West Contra Costa, but also around the Bay Area to really uplift the market labor data and make sure that we're doing best practices and we're guiding our students on a path that is setting them up for success in that particular industry. Next slide. And this is an example of the different courses and sequences that can exist in a CTE model. And so what is essential is to have a concentrator and a capstone course. That's a sequential two-year order of courses. And best practice is to have an intro class as well. And so you'll see in West Contra, a few examples of a pathway sequence. In our Richmond High School Law Academy, you have four courses. And so that's starting with almost a pre-intro in ninth grade and continuing on through their 12th grade year. And that includes a dual enrollment course that combines with their A to G courses that they're already taking. So that gives them a head start if they do decide to go into a two-year, four-year degree. They have college credits that they're earning during high school for free and at no cost to them or their families. And then you'll see below, as a two-course sequence model, we have Richmond High School Fashion. And above that, you have a three-course sequence in Welding. And so the goal, again, is to increase those two-course sequences to a three-course sequence and then to combine that with a dual enrollment experience and then combine that with an internship or other independent work-based learning experience or an industry certification. And when you add that all together, you have a student who is graduating with a better understanding of the direction they want to go and having the experience and skill set to make a positive contribution into the workforce if that is their path as well. Next slide. And just to close it out, we just wanted to share because photos say a thousand words and really just highlight the work that's happening, the things that our students are doing this year across our elementaries, middle schools, and high schools. And this is a combination of photos of middle school and high school. There's some captions in there, so I won't go through each one. But you'll see that there's a whole range of industry sectors that are represented in this montage. And all of this is with industry partnership connections or going outside of the classroom to experiencing real-world experiences, which we all need post-COVID. And so we're excited that we're back and doing this all in person. And we hope for more to come. And we're very thankful to have this opportunity to work with our students to make these things happen. And with that, next slide. We'd like to thank you for your time. Again, thank you for inviting us, Dr. Hurst. And that is the end of our presentation.
And that concludes our report. We'll turn it back over to the Board President.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. Board, do you have any questions? We'll do three questions. We'll start with Trustee Phillips. Go ahead, sir.
I do have a question. I have a comment.
We don't do comments after the superintendent report. Correct? Hold on, Trustee Phillips. We typically don't do comments after the superintendent report. Typically, we don't do comments, but we can do comments, correct? Let me get questions, and then I'll circle back to you.
Thank you.
Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, my question is for the CTE team. Thank you for being here tonight. Great presentation. The question's around what drives the experience at each high school? So each high school offers, for the most part, something different. So what drives those choices that are offered?
Thank you. So you have noticed, or you do notice, that we have over 20 pathways and they span the high schools. So good noticing there. In terms of which programs are offered at which school, it's really a combination of a couple of factors. One is labor market information, right? What are the local industries? That's why we have so many health and so many IT pathways, as well as sustainability. We all know that fiscally, programs can be expensive to run. And so the cost, or the number of each program often relates to the cost to run the program. I'll just say, running a welding program, we, running one is a lot. And then the other two factors are employer, local employer, engagement opportunities, as well as student and community interest, of course, that being probably the most important. In terms of where school, what programs are at which schools, some of it is historic, based on a grant that came out a while ago that has sunsetted. And that, well, the new app grant applications, we are confirmed to have them, but we can't apply for new ones. And so we were locked into what we were granted at that time. When it comes to new pathways, we're really looking at those four factors that I just mentioned.
Thank you so much. You answered my second question. My final question, it might be for you, Ms. Neely Johnson. But if a student is looking for a specific pathway that's offered, let's say, at Kennedy High School for welding, how does the transfer work? Like, is it easily done due to that factor? If a student or family wants that specific CTE offering, is it part of our process that they can request?
Yes, so I'm looking at Director Smith. But we, you know, we have our yearly transfer process in February. And so anyone in our district can apply for a transfer. And from what I'm seeing, that yes, that is something that they can put down as a reason that they would want to transfer for that particular pathway.
Perfect. Thank you so much, everyone. That's it, President Smith. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? You have a question, Trustee Christian? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And just a few questions I have. How is CTE being advertised to our students? You know, letting them know about what's going on there at their school site from the ninth grade or middle school? How is it being advertised?
Thank you very much for the question. Currently, it's, we advertise it all the way down to our middle schools. We go out when our middle schools offer college and career fairs, and you'll see us tabling, often highlighting all of the pathways that we have. Our wonderful college and career counselors do a great job of really getting the word out there about what programs are being offered, which are articulated, which offer college credit. And really, the students themselves, who are in our pathways, do an amazing job of really advertising the program because they're so proud of the work that they're accomplishing, the work that they're doing, the goals that they're making, the knowledge they're gaining. And when Danny and I often send our students to work-based learning experiences, which include job shadows, mentoring, field trips, study trips, they do a great job of coming back and really excited and really letting other students know, including the freshman class, what an amazing opportunity it is to be in a particular program. So our students are the best advertisement.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question, and also Clark Gonzalez-Hoy had mentioned about, how can a student, you know, get? Each school has something different. And I would just say this is that when I was a student here in this district at Kennedy, Richmond High had a lot of the programs. They used to bus us over from Kennedy High School to Richmond High School to take those courses. And, you know, where you still be a Kennedy student. You still be a Kennedy student. So how can we do that?
Well, there's no longer buses in our system, unfortunately. So that's out of the question anyway. But I think, I think really, the goal is to go based off of the input of students and families. And so to Alicia's point, to really, during these college and career fairs or these back-to-school nights, to really highlight the opportunities that there are, that exist. And if there's a need or an urge to have a new pathway be added, then that is something that's happened and continues to happen as the industries develop, as the pathways develop, and the schools have more of a clear decision and idea of what they want to offer. But there are parallels. And if you go back to the slide, or I don't know if we have time, but you'll see there's a number of industry pathways that are in a variety of schools. So it's not only one-offs. There are those as well, and we recognize that. And so as we strive for parity and having clear equity and access for all pathways across the district, that's something that can continue to grow and develop with future funding and grants that we're continuing to strive for. I don't know if that answered your question fully, but.
I may. Okay, thank you.
I would, Trustee Christian, I'd say we'd add to that that we would love to do that in a world where that was fiscally and scheduling possible. At this point, our real focus is making sure students and families know what programs are where when they're making those decisions and then facilitating if they want to make a switch, making sure they know about that transfer opportunity. And then also really highlighting for students that the pathways that they're in doesn't have to be what they want to do because the skills ultimately are transferable. So I can be in a welding pathway, not actually have an ultimate desire to be in welding, but the instructor is hopefully enforcing or encouraging me to understand the skills that I'm learning are transferable to what I might want to do in health or tech or something else.
And I just want to add one last thing that I forgot to mention, and I'll be brief, is that with internship opportunities that we're identifying and promoting within School Links to students, those are open through the whole school largely for many of those. I mean, sorry, the district for many of them. So to Ariel's point, if there isn't a pathway in particular in that, you know, industry sector at that school, there's still opportunities to engage and connect to work-based learning experiences in other industries through summer programs and after-school internships as well. So that was one thing I forgot to mention.
All right, thank you. That's it.
I do have one question before we get to comments. The one question I do have is, can they jump between? And I think you may have answered it, but can they jump between pathways or academies? So if I start, if I start in ninth grade in law, and then I reach the 10th grade and I realize, you know what? I may really like engineering. Can I jump to an engineering pathway? Or am I to stay in the pathway that I start?
So our answer is always going to be what's in the best interest of the student. Period. So if you are a student and you want to switch and your schedule permits it, and the school district and the schedule permits it, awesome, I'm so glad that you discovered something that you want to do. Let's make it happen. I will say that the state model encourages staying in the pathway for the entire course sequence. That's what they incentivize. Students who complete a pathway, which is considered completing the whole course sequence and passing all of the classes, are granted to be a CTE completer. And also, we know that, again, at the end of the day, what the student wants to do is the ultimate answer. So I would say, we encourage counselors to work with students. If the student wants to make a switch, is able to articulate why they want to make that switch, and it works in the school schedule, it's like, godspeed. We're not going to stop someone from doing that.
I'm just going to jump in here and say, and that's why the ultimate goal is to bring career technical education all the way down to the elementary grades so that students begin to explore other occupations than teacher, doctor, police person, so that we can begin to explore their strengths, what they feel they're good at, and then really develop those along the way so that by the time they enter high school, they have a clear mindset about where they want to be and what their goals are. And so ultimately, that would be our goal to really develop CTE into the elementary grades, to really develop a high school sequence of courses that is strong, where students feel confident, students feel successful, and ultimately, connect those experiences in our CTE high school programs to their goals post-secondary.
Thank you very much. Board, we are going to go to comments. I'm sorry, is there another question? You have a question? Go ahead.
So I have a question just for clarity. So to be clear, like, CTE is not like provided or like available at all schools, but you guys are working to implement it in all schools? Or, because I noticed in the presentation, it was a lot of like, not every school was like included. And I know for a fact that my school isn't typically like considered for these types of programs. I know that they have this academy at my school, but we don't have it like for other people.
Thanks for the question. I think we have a proud middle college student. Yes?
Yeah.
Awesome. Love middle college. No, I appreciate that. I would say that we're working collectively with curriculum folks to be able to provide all students with the opportunities. I would love to check in with you another, like, after and tell you about the awesome classes at CCC that are CTE that I'd love to help folks connect with. Really, as a district, I would say our goal is connecting students to college and career opportunities. And in a way, as a middle college student, you are a CTE student because you're graduating with so many college credits, which is really what we're doing. But I do hear you, and I appreciate that career-focused lens being slightly different. I'd love to continue that conversation offline, but yeah. And share some of the awesome CTE programs at CCC that you could take as a concurrent enrollment student.
Okay, cool. My last question is like, can you describe how you plan to implement it in all schools? Because I know that that's like, that's like the main goal of this presentation, but I couldn't quite understand how you were working to implement it, like, what types of systems?
I love the advocacy. I think that we will continue that conversation. I think right now, we're planning with grants to, a lot of these programs are grant-funded, rooted in the state's priorities, which we just submitted one last night. I think that I would really love to have a conversation with middle college principal, if, and district folks, to see how we could expand into middle college, if that's part of the programmatic plan. We'd be super into it. More specifically, we'd have to talk after.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for those questions. Board, we're going to go to comments. Let's do a Bennett comment. And then we're going to need to talk about if we're going to set a precedent to do questions and comments after the superintendent's report. So we'll have to talk about that later, but let's do comments now. Go ahead, sir.
I actually do have one question before I make a comment, if that's okay?
Absolutely. Go ahead, sir.
In my opinion, these superintendent reports actually stopped being superintendent reports a long time ago. And the items that I've brought up during these reports are really items that historically would have been put on the agenda under discussion, where the board would have been, and the public would have been able to ask questions, but the board would have also been able to make comments because our superintendent, and I'm not complaining about it, I'm just calling it how I see it. Our superintendent doesn't talk very much during the superintendent reports. The staff does most of the talking about their various items. So if we could either move these kind of reports back to discussion or open it up during the report like real discussion, I think that would be helpful. So it's just something I want to put out there for you to maybe think about. So that was my question, or if you can think or consider that. And then I could do my comment whenever you're ready. So my comment is, I would, Dr. Hurst, I would like you and your staff to maybe have a more nuanced approach about the whole building and construction trade issue. Because I understand that historically, there has been an issue around tracking of Black and Brown children in regards to CTE-type work. But I do think that there's levels, that there are levels to CTE-type work, right? There are multiple jobs in that category. And when we talk about. And when we talk about building and construction trade jobs, um, historically, the union jobs in building and construction trades, they've been, uh, the members have been white historically. And so I think black and brown students have been tracked into building-type work, but not the high-paying construction jobs that like the building and construction trade folks do. They're making like over a hundred thousand dollars in those jobs. So while we're not focusing on those kind of things for our kids, white kids are actually going into those trades and making a whole lot of money that our kids don't, out of fear of tracking them. But that's not where they were being sent in the first place. That's why I'm saying we should have a more nuanced approach. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have a comment? Trustee Reckler, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. I was, I was actually going to make the same comment as trustee Phillips, which is, um, if these could be agendized as discussion items, so that we could be thoughtful and come prepared with questions, and that the superintendent's report is really a superintendent's report, what happened in the last two weeks, what's going on in the district, what did you do, what events are coming up, blah, 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 you know, whatever, um, needs to be communicated to the board and the public. And then I wanted to also talk about a, uh, career day that I went to at Richmond High School with Turner Construction. And this actually talks about what you were talking about. And I didn't know what to expect, and I knocked off work, and I just went over to see what it was about. And this Turner Construction program, this presentation, was people from Turner Construction who came in. It was phenomenal. I mean, it was people who are managing construction. It wasn't really so much banging the nails into the, um, you know, the boards, but this was like, and the, their team was completely diverse. Company was amazing, career tracks, people had been there for years and years and years. They talked about their career paths. They all came in from different ways. One was like an architect masters and did all different things. And so it's alive and well, and, um, I think that it was, it was terrific. So that's all I wanted to communicate. Thank you.
Clark Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President Smith-Folds. Yeah, I did want to respond. Um, I think that both trustee Phillips and trustee Reckler are right. I mean, that's what I would think our goal would like, would be. But I think that from my experience being president last year, the reality was that we just don't have enough time. Um, we don't have enough time because we have a lot of items that we have to get through, because we are trying to prioritize ending early, or ending on time, really, I should say. Um, and I think that to some extent, um, especially if we as the board either come unprepared, or don't, or don't ask our questions beforehand, then it also adds that time, right? So I think that like four of us have prioritized going to our one-on-ones, which is great. Uh, and same with our student trustees that met before. Uh, but if that's not happening for everyone, then it really makes it impossible for us to do so. So we have to figure out how to make it within the timeframe, but we have too many agenda items. So I agree. I mean, it's maybe not the right place, but otherwise it won't happen. So we just have to figure out what that would be. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Superintendent Hurst, go ahead.
Thank you so much for the comments from board. I just want to just add to what clerk Gonzalez-Hoy was saying. There was actually a specific request during the agenda setting that we as staff bring several topics, and I think it was a total of 10 to 12 topics, um, including all of our programs and just giving an overview of what's happening. And you're right, uh, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy does boil down to time, especially looking at our agendas over the past. Um, just finding a place to make sure that we update the board and the public on what's going on.
Thank you so much, everyone, for your comments. Thank you so much for your superintendent report. CTE, thank you so much for your presentation. And, um, we are moving to our action item. Action item E1. Oh, that's me. This is a public hearing on the sunshine of initial proposals for the Teamsters Local Union Number 856 in the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Tonight, the district board will conduct a public hearing on the initial proposals of the Teamsters Local Union Number 856 in the district pursuant to the sunshine requirements of California Government Code Section 3547. During the public hearing, the focus will be on the gathering of input from the public, including district teachers, other employees, and parents, regarding the initial bargaining proposals being presented. The purpose of this meeting is to inform the public about the topics of negotiations between the district and Teamsters Local Union 856. Tonight's, tonight's meetings will proceed as follows. First, the board will open the public hearing. Second, Mr. Conrad, Director of Labor Relations, District Negotiator, will be given 10 minutes to make a presentation to the board regarding the initial proposals from Teamsters Local Union Number 856 in the district. Third, upon the conclusion of the Director of Labor Relations' presentation, the board president will take public comments on this item. The total time for comment from each participant will be limited to one minute. The total time allotted for this public comment on this matter is 15 minutes. Fourth, board members may ask clarifying questions to district staff. Then the public hearing will be closed. At this time, I'm opening the public hearing on the initial proposals of Teamsters Local Number 856 in the district. I invite the Director of Labor Relations to make his presentation.
Good evening, President Smith-Folds, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, trustees and president, um, um, and, uh, superintendent Hurst. I'm here today as President Smith-Folds indicated, as part of the sunshining process in accordance with Ed. Code 3547. Once an agreement is reached with each unit on the agreement, it will be reviewed by the Contra Costa County of Education under the requirements of AB 1200, and then brought to the school board for ratification. The current two-year collective bargaining agreement for the Teamsters Local 856 and West Contra Costa Unified School District expires June 30th of 2024. These proposals expressed to you this evening are for a successor agreement between Teamsters Local 856 and WCC USD's current two-year collective bargaining agreement. Pursuant to Ed. Educational Employment Relations Act, the initial proposals to be negotiated by the school district and labor union must be submitted at a public hearing of the governing board. The initial proposals of the West Contra Costa Unified School District to Teamsters Local Union 856, along with the initial proposals from the Teamsters Local Union Number 856 to West Contra Costa Unified School District, at which time the public is allowed to comment on the proposals. During the time of the collective bargaining agreement and COVID pandemic, there have been much discussions and memorandum of understandings, which were entered into specific one-time agreements. These are not part of the negotiations, and these proposals are not related in any way to the current or future MOUs. It's important to the public to understand that the district and Teamsters Local 856 are currently addressing conditions impacting programs, but that the contract negotiations presented tonight are not connected in any way to discussion. And public comment should be limited to the terms that are being sunshined and not directed toward any current MOUs. The following are the West Contra Costa Unified School District's initial proposals that were presented to the Teamsters Local 856. Article 1, Agreement. Article 3, Roster of Positions. Article 5, Personnel Files. Article 8, Grievance Procedure. Article 10, Working Hours, Rest Periods, Lunchtime, and Absence From Duty, Call-In. Article 11, Leaves of Absence. Article 12, Transfer. Article 13, Evaluation. Article 14, Safety. Article 15, Health and Welfare Benefits. Article 16, Hiring. Article 17, Compensation and Overtime. And Article 36, Signatures to the Agreement. The district reserves the right to open any other articles as needed during the negotiations, and will exchange proposals at the bargaining table. The district reserves the right to add, amend, or delete proposals during contract negotiations. The Teamsters Local Union 856 proposed the following articles. Article 10, Working Hours, Rest Periods, Lunchtime, Absence From Duty, and Call-In Time. Article 14, Safety. Article 15, Health and Welfare Benefits. Article 16, Hiring. Article 17, Compensation and Overtime. Article 21, Disciplinary Actions. Article 23, Reassignment, and Exhibit A, Salary Schedules. The union also reserved the right to open other articles as needed during negotiations, and will pass proposals at the bargaining table. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Board, do you have any questions? Is there any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment. Kate Burkhardt, please unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, my, that keeps putting my hand up, and I don't mean to. I have no public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The public hearing on the presentation of the initial proposals from Teamster Local Union Number 856 in the district is hereby closed. Is there a motion to approve the presentation of the initial proposals?
President Smith-Folds, I move that we approve the initial presentation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Thank you. Board, are there any comments? No more comments? Go ahead, mister, uh, sorry, go ahead, trustee Phillips.
It's okay if you say mister. Um, I hope that one day, um, we are able to, um, get to interest-based bargaining, um, with all of our, our units. Uh, this may not be that day, uh, but periodically, I like to say this, just to remind folks, because I think that that's the space ultimately that we want to be in. That's all.
Thank you very much. Any more comments? No, board, let's move to the vote. Trustee, uh, Palkor?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee, Abdugahparbo?
Abstain. Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, trustee, uh, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you, everyone. We are now moving to action item E2, approve the second interim for the 23, the 2023, 2024 school year. CBO Moses, I believe this is your item.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, President, trustee Smith-Folds, uh, school board members, trustees, superintendent Hurst. Um, we're here this evening to present to you our second interim report and to request board approval of this said report. Um, by law, the school district must certify the financial condition, condition of the district by reviewing two interim reports. This is the second interim report covering the period of July 1st, 2023, to January 31st, 2024. It will also include a revised budget for the remainder of the current and two future fiscal years. The district's second interim report must also be reviewed using criterion standards established by the state. And there is a full report attached to the board agenda item. We also want to highlight, before we get started with the presentation, that, uh, the second interim report includes a fiscal solvency plan that identifies needed reductions in both personnel and non-personnel expenditures during the two subsequent years. Okay, slide presentation. Thank you. I'd like to begin by just thanking our hard-working business services and general services teams, um, preparing these reports as a team effort, as is monitoring our, um, budgetary and fiscal needs. I'd like to also, uh, ensure that we've elevated Shannon Norris from Ryland School Business Consulting and Javeta Cleveland, our county fiscal advisor. Uh, both are supporting with budget oversight and development, and we appreciate their attendance this evening. Tonight's presentation will be, uh, provided by myself. I am Kim Moses, your interim associate superintendent of business services, and our director of business services, Jeff Carter. I'd like to now turn it over to Jeff Carter to get us started with tonight's presentation.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody. Um, first, I'd like to acknowledge and also appreciate business services team and their hard effort that went into preparing the second interim report for you. Uh, I'd start, I'd like to start by reviewing and analyze, uh, the annual budget timeline to give some perspective and an update of where we are in the, the year. Uh, if you want to look at the slide in the upper right, we start the new fiscal year 2324 in July. We then, in September, reported on the unaudited actuals, uh, which gave the final results of the previous year. Uh, we then reported first interim in December with revisions to the adopted budget. And that was followed by the governor's budget proposal in January, which gave us an update on, uh, an outlook for, uh, excuse me, uh, gave us an updated outlook from the state. Tonight, we're presenting the second interim, which consists of data as of January 31st. Uh, this will give you an updated, uh, projection and figures compared to first interim, uh, throughout the year. We'll then be transitioning in April to budget development for the upcoming year. And we'll get an update from the governor's revision in May, uh, which will finalize our planning for the 2425 adopted budget. Uh, in June, we'll be back to present the third interim financial report, as well as the new budget for, uh, 2425. Uh, tonight, we'll also give you an update on the latest data that we have on enrollment, state and federal revenue, budget assumptions, and information for all funds. If we can go to the next slide. So what is the second interim process? Uh, we review position control, all of our positions, all of our FTE, all of our vacancies, and we analyze how those positions are funded. Uh, we then compare that information to what has actually been spent so, so far. And we want to ensure that all positions are sufficiently budgeted through June 30th of 2024, and revise any projections based on current vacancies. If a position has not been filled up until this point in the year, we need to reallocate those funds to cover expenses incurred from substitutes or time cards, contractors, et cetera, for that vacancy. Uh, we also review every fund, every resource, and every account code, uh, in our system to ensure alignment. Uh, we look at expenditures for compliance and alignment with, uh, budget requirements and restrictions to unrestricted and restricted res- resource accounts. Uh, in addition to all of these steps, there are a lot more technical work that goes into completing these tasks. Um, and once all of that is completed, we export our data from our immune system to our financials, from our financial system to our state software called SACS, which stands for standardized account code structure. Uh, this verifies that all the data is in compliance with account code structure. Our 3% minimum reserve is met, indirect cost rates and contributions are in alignment. Uh, section three of the second interim report attached to tonight's presentation is compiled of these state reports from the SACS data system. Uh, this is when we then bring it to the Board of Education for approval, and followed by sending it into the Contra Costa County of Education, uh, for final submission to the state. Uh, thank you all for your time. And for that, I would like to pass it back to interim associate superintendent Kim Moses.
Thank you, Jeff. We'd like to spend the remainder amount of time sharing with you some of the information from the second interim report. If we could go to the next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, no previous slide. Thank you. Uh, so I'd first like to highlight some of the changes since first interim. Um, since we reported last, we'd like to share that we have, um, incurred a decreased fund balance of about 1.5 million. However, we've had an increase in interest income of about 3.9 million. Um, we also have increased expenditures discovered during the second interim, um, and the legislative analyst, analyst office announced, uh, expected decrease in our 2425 statutory COLA, a significant de- decrease to 0.76, which caused us to need to adjust our, uh, expectations and our estimations. So, and the estimated reduction, I'm sorry, the estimated reductions to Prop 98 Funding Guarantee are also reviewed as the governor presents his proposed budget. Next slide. We wanted to revisit our enrollment trends, as we know enrollment impacts our budget. I want to point out in this slide that when we presented to you in first interim, we initially expected an increase in our 2324 enrollment based upon preliminary projections. We've needed to adjust that. It was found during our, um, final reporting period that that amount was overstated due to sped preschool enrollment being included in the first interim numbers. The adjustment resulted in, instead of an increase in enrollment, a decrease of, uh, projected enrollment of 190 students. We've also included at the bottom of the chart, the, uh, average daily attendance rates, which also play a significant role in our financial picture, uh, noting that for this current school year, it is projected that, uh, we will land at about 88.24% of, uh, average daily attendance. Next slide. We've compared the revenue, uh, the incoming revenue and the revenue expectations from first to second interim. And what we found is, unfortunately, and what we found is unfortunately a decrease in expected revenue, but just a slight decrease from the adjustment at first interim of, uh, uh, negative one hundred ninety thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars. Uh, this is largely due to a decrease in our base revenue, um, but there was an increase in our supplemental concentration grant, and the reduction is the balance of that. Next slide. This slide demonstrate demonstrates all revenue changes. The top portion of the chart, uh, relates to our unrestricted general operating fund revenues only, and the second portion of the chart combines all revenue, both restricted and unrestricted. Uh, you will notice that for the unrestricted general fund revenues, there was an increase of one point two million dollars, and that was interest revenues that were not predicted prior to the budget. We can never understand fully how much we'll collect from interest, but we were very pleasantly surprised to see that, um, our interest revenue is up. However, our LCFF sources took that slight decline of one hundred ninety thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars. When we look at our combined general revenue, this are general revenue funds, that's restricted and unrestricted, we find that we have, um, due also to interest income and increase in the, the budget of all funds combined. And that increase from first to second interim amounts to two point seven million dollars. Next slide. So now we'd like to talk about the changes to second interim. Um, the changes that were noted is that there's a decline in the ADA, which we saw on a previous slide. However, a slight increase in the, uh, unduplicated pupil percentage for LCAP funding resulting in a slight increase to that funding source. We have increased, uh, interest revenue with interest income, which we've just reviewed, and, uh, significantly the decrease of that COLA for twenty-four, twenty-five school year from the expected three point nine four percent to a decreased number of zero point seven six percent. Uh, we also noticed an increased contribution need from Fund Seventeen in years two and three, and we'll review that shortly. Next slide. This slide outlines the assumptions, which are the planning factors for both this twenty-three, twenty-four planning year and the multi-year projections. Um, what I'd like to point out is that during the first interim report, uh, we took a conservative approach due to the expected reduction in COLA and the, um, lack of information at that time as to what that meant to our budget. However, what you'll see with the second interim report is the planning factors that we've used to adjust the multi-year projections directly correlate to what's currently on the school services DART board and what's expected by the legislative analyst office. Um, we've used a COLA for this current year of eight point two-two percent. COLA expected for twenty-four, twenty-five is zero point seven six percent, and a COLA expected for twenty-five, twenty-six of two point seven three percent. In addition, we've also, um, relied on other assumption factors such as employee benefits and retiree benefits. Next slide. This slide shows our combined general fund multi-year summary. This is all revenues that come into the district, both restricted and unrestricted. What we can notice for this current adjustment for second interim and that first column noting twenty-three, twenty-four, our, um, operating deficit has increased by five million dollars, and our projected ending fund balance has likewise decreased by five million dollars. That, the result of that is a decreased, uh, balance in our restricted fund of three point nine million dollars and a decreased balance of our overall ending fund balance of one point five million. Next slide. This chart specifically looks at our general operating budget, our unrestricted funds. When we look at our unrestricted general fund, which is the monies required to pay for our base operating services and staff, uh, what we find is that at second interim, the adjustment that was needed is an increase in expenditures of one point two million, an increase of the contributions to special program of one million, which resulted in a decrease of fund balance of one point five million. In addition, when we looked at the multi-year projections due to these increased expenditures and decreased revenues, uh, what we find is that over the two out years, we don't expect to have to change our fiscal solvency plan. We, we have already written in reductions in the amount of seven million dollars for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. That will need to be identified by our, um, staff and board and committees. Uh, but we've also noted an increase in that contribution over time to other programs. If you notice for our ending balance, we're reserving just enough to meet our three percent requirement and to, um, account for our stores and revolving cash. We have a very tight budget, and in order to even achieve this tight budget, we're needing to transfer from our special reserve fund in order to ensure that we can balance our books. It is expected that in twenty-four, twenty-five, we will need a transfer of fifteen point six million from Fund Seventeen Special Reserves, and that in twenty-five, twenty-six, we will need a transfer of twenty point four million from those special reserves. We are taking deep, or we're assuming deep cuts from the special reserves because even with our fiscal solvency plan, we are unable to balance our budget and meet our three percent requirement. Next slide. So the multi-year projection can be summed up in this way. Um, in this current year, we are meeting our three percent reserve in our general fund with some fund balance remaining at the end of this school year. In the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, it is expected that we'll meet our three percent reserve, but only with the implementation of a fiscal reduction plan and a contribution of fifteen point seven million from our Fund Seventeen. It is also expected that in twenty-five, twenty-six, we can meet that three percent reserve with a fiscal reduction plan and an additional contribution of twenty point three million from Fund Seventeen. Next page. As a result of the need, uh, to balance our budget with fiscal reductions and support from Fund Seventeen, uh, we are recommending that the board certify this budget as qualified because it is projected that the district may not meet its financial obligations in one of the three years, and this is due to the structural deficiencies, the required reduction plans, and the economic uncertainties. And this concludes my portion of the presentation. Um, we've elevated Javeta Cleveland from our county, uh, fiscal advisor, and I'd like to invite her to speak to the second interim report as well.
Yes, um, Board President Smith Folds, Board of Trustees, Superintendent, Staff and Community. The district has made progress on its fiscal recovery plan. However, the second interim budget multi-year projections, as just shared by the interim superintendent, assistant superintendent, relies on one-time reserves to balance the budget in twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six. There are definitely significant factors impacting the district's budget. One is obviously the uncertainty in the state budget. Um, the projected reductions in cost of living, um, for twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six is having a, uh, compounding effect on the district's deficit spending. An internal factor that's really impacting this budget is attendance. The attendance percentage is projected fairly low in the subsequent fiscal years, and that's really, um, also impacting the district's, uh, deficit spending. So being able to increase that attendance will have a better, a significant effect, uh, positive effect on the district's budget if that can happen. Um, these internal factors are, um, increasing the district's, uh, deficit spending. I want to continue to encourage the board, um, to continue with the fiscal, uh, solvency plan to ensure that the approved budget reductions are fully implemented and continue on, um, a path for fiscal recovery. That's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Cleveland. This concludes our report.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Cleveland. Thank you, CBO Moses. Thank you, Mr. Carr. Thank you so much for your presentation. Board, um, first of all, staff, I'm sorry, is there a public comment?
Yes, we have two. Our public comment, it's Kate Burkhardt. Please unmute yourself.
It's certainly a diary report, and I hope that we can get through this. But I certainly admire, um, Ms. Moses and Ms. Cleveland for working on it and coming up with the second interim. Congratulations.
Staff, do we have, um, any more public comment?
Yes, we have one more. Our next public speaker is Salon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board. I just want to remind you all that on the California dashboard, um, black children were over identified for attendance. So if that's one of our issues, can we make sure to use that LCAP funding to address that and not just hire a whole bunch of teachers that teach everybody because the black children are, um, not coming to our schools, and we need to really intentionally look at why they're not coming and why they're leaving. I'm complete.
Thank you very much, staff. Is there more public comment?
Yes, our next public comment is sorry, uh, Mark and Marie Shaws, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'd just like to know if there's a breakdown by community of what the attendance is. I'd like to see what the difference is between the schools in terms of, uh, non-attendance.
Our next public comment is CTA Mark. Please unmute yourself.
Um, this is Mark Shaws, and I'm noticing that there is a increase in the take from Fund Seventeen from fifteen to twenty million dollars, and I'm hoping the board really recognizes that. It's not an unlimited fund. I wonder what happens after you take twenty million out. When does it go to zero, and then you can't? Um, the way the fiscal solvency plan is working out, to me, it seems that you're just kicking the can down the road because you're relying on the Fund Seventeen to balance the budget. But again, that's an un, um, it's, it's a limited resource. So I would hope that the board would look and try to reduce the take from Fund Seventeen so that it actually can be fiscally solvent four years from now. Thank you.
Our next public comment is CTA Mark. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening. Um, I just wanted to, uh, point out that, uh, pulling money from Fund Seventeen does not make this, uh, second interim qualified. The interim associate superintendent is asking you to deem it qualified, but it's actually not. The district has enough money to pay its, uh, obligations and to have three percent reserve as required by the state. It's not a qualified budget, and I would encourage you not to, uh, vote that it is qualified when it is actually a positive budget. Um, I also want to say that these conclusions are based on under-projections of attendance and over-projections of expenditures as in past years, and, um, th- this is actually not, uh, something that the board needs to do here. It's going to continue onerous county oversight of our district, which is going to lead to further lack of attendance. People aren't attending school because we don't have teachers in the classroom to teach the students. We have a vacancy crisis.
Our last public comment is Kate Burkhardt. Please unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, my iPad is still raising my hand when I don't need to. Sorry. No.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much, Board. Before we go to questions, can I get a motion?
I'll go ahead and, uh, move the second interim for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as qualified budget.
Thank you. Is there a second?
President Smith Folds, I'll, I'll second, but just, we always do questions before the motions, so I don't know.
I knew I was out of order. There was a part of me that was like, that's not right.
It's okay. I'll second that.
Okay, so trustee Reckler, your motion's going to stand. Um, clerk Gonzalez Hoi, we're going to take your second, but first, let's do questions so we can stay in order. I did it the wrong way. We needed to do questions first, then a motion, then comment. I did it wrong. So who has questions? Any board member have questions? Trustee Reckler, go ahead. Let's start with three.
Thank you. Uh, also, if somebody wants to amend the motion that was put on the floor, I'm completely open to that, so.
Uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, why don't we answer Mark Schels's comment? Which is, if you can address Fund Seventeen and what the bandwidth is in Fund Seventeen, when does it go to zero, and what might you envision as a plan to pay back Fund Seventeen? Thank you.
I'm going to ask Jeff to come up and field questions with me. He's more familiar with the exact balances of Fund Seventeen. I can give you approximate balances. Um, however, ah, thirty-five? Um, Jeff's going to look up the exact number for you, but we have approximately thirty-five million in Fund Seventeen. Uh, this budget causes us to need to expend about twenty-seven million of that, and to, right now, we do not have a plan to replace those funds. We are trying very diligently not to expend it down to zero, but until we get to a structurally, um, healthy budget, we aren't able to set aside for savings. So the question related to Fund Seventeen and spending it down is, yes, we're uncomfortable as well without having a rainy day fund, which is what we typically equate Fund Seventeen to. However, we don't see another avenue to a balanced budget. Do you have anything to add, Jeff?
Just the exact number after interest incurred this year for Fund Seventeen will be thirty-six million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars projected.
Does that answer your question, trustee?
And just to clarify, that's, that's after this interim?
That is the, the, the accurate calculation for second interim, so.
Great, okay, thank you. Um, thank you very much. Next is, I'd like to talk about, um, the unduplicated percentage. So first, um, thank you and congratulations for picking it up about half a percent. That's important. Uh, next is, do you believe that sixty-nine point one four is an accurate reflection for the school district? And if it went up, what would that mean in dollars?
Are we speaking of the unduplicated count, trustee Reckler?
Yeah, so it went from sixty-eight point six five last year at this time to sixty-nine point one four at this interim, which is great. It's a pickup of about half a percent. But does it, do we think that that's a real number? Do we think it's actually, do we think our unduplicated count is higher and we, because, you know, everybody gets free food now, the forms don't get filled out, and it's actually higher is what I'm trying to get at, and then quantifying, you know, that, that, that dollar amount for the district.
I'm going to allow Jeff to answer this question. I can speak to the data for the collection of the, um, educational benefits form. Um, thanks to Kim Chamberlain and her team, we have seen a significant increase of number of forms returned this year, which resulted in additional, uh, increased percentages at some of our school sites. And Jeff doesn't have anything to add.
Okay, finally, we're going to, we're going to talk about attendance later, but it's my understanding that each percentage in attendance is worth about one point seven million dollars. Is that correct?
For each percentage point, it's difficult to calculate in percentages. We typically calculate it in numbers. I would say one point one million for every thousand students and our, um, we're about we, what we calculated this year is we have about twenty-five point seven million in unrealized revenue. What we calculated this year is we have about twenty-five point seven million in unrealized revenue due to the lowered ADA. So I think it's best that we keep to that calculation because I can't calculate one percent on the spot.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's all I have. I have comments at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Do you have questions?
Good evening. How does our district define balanced budget, the term balanced budget?
Thank you for the question. When I'm referring to a balanced budget, I'm referring to our need to balance our expenditures and our revenues and still retain the three percent reserve. And so it isn't balanced in the sense of that our revenues and expenditures match, but that we're using our savings and we're using our reductions in order to get to the space where we can meet our obligations and our three percent reserve. So that's what we mean by balanced.
Okay, so really, and I'm not, I'm just pulling this out for everyone, so really, we're really still deficit spending, right?
Yes, absolutely. The deficit spending is continuing, which is why we need the use of reserves and reductions.
Okay, so we really don't have a balanced budget, correct?
No, only balanced in the sense that we're meeting our obligation to the state by tapping into those other resources. So I should have used a better word. What we have is a budget that we can bring to you for consideration because it meets all of our requirements with the use of those other resources.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, clerk Gonzalez-Hoyt.
Thank you, President Smithfolds. Thank you so much for the presentation. I think the word balanced is our word of the day because I'm going to ask about the fund balance. So we keep hearing, well, I'm hearing from community folks asking about a very large fund balance that we have in unrestricted and some in restricted. My understanding correctly, if I'm wrong, and please add, is that obviously looking at slide ten is that we're going to use that fund balance practically in the next two years, correct?
Absolutely. In the place of the restricted funds, what we have as a component of our ending fund balance, forty-three million are restricted funds, which means they are tied to grant programs or specific actions related to restricted resources. We do not have an ongoing fund balance in the general fund. We expect to have a small fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, but we do not expect a fund balance in the two out years in the unrestricted general fund. And in the restricted general fund, we're expecting a balance of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, fund balance of seventeen point six million. And in twenty-five, twenty-six, that dwindles significantly to a fund balance of two point eight million. Many of our restricted funding sources are multi-year grants. So when we say fund balance, we just mean available grant monies. Those monies typically come in for multi-year spending, so they're not reserves in the sense that they don't have a purpose. They're reserves in the sense of they might have been a grant meant to be spent over three to five years. And so we need to retain that balance so that we can meet the obligations of those grants over the three to five years. So when we say there's a large fund balance, that actually is an inaccurate statement. What we have is restricted grant monies that are needed in order to meet the obligations in the out years of the grant or the restricted plan for the resource.
Thank you for that clarification. My next question is related to what trustee Phillips was asking. If tonight we were to change our definition of a balanced budget, and let's say that we were to say, actually, we don't agree with the recommendation. We want to have a positive second interim. What would happen?
Well, the reality is, we cannot assume a positive budget until we're one hundred percent sure that the nineteen point seven million in cuts that have been approved are realized for our next budget. Likewise, we cannot assume a balanced budget if we aren't able to cut the seven million expected in the next out year. Currently, I guess if we were to take all of our reserves and put them into the first year, we could say that we used our reserves to create the perception of a balanced budget. But that would not hold true over the three-year period. We can't show that over three years, over three years, without a doubt, we have the resources to meet our obligation. It's for that reason we can't self-certify as positive. If we did that, there's a very likely chance of the county reviewing our books through the SAC software system and disagreeing with us and reducing our rating to qualified.
Thank you. President Smithfolds has my last question.
Thank you so much. Anyone else have any questions? No? Okay. We had a motion by trustee Reckler. Trustee Reckler, does your motion still stand?
Yeah, unless anybody wants to amend it. Thank you.
CNN, trustee Reckler's motion still stands. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoyt, is your second still standing?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Board, do we have any comments? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
I was just going to ask if the motion can be repeated.
So the motion was to approve the second interim for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
With a qualified.
With a qualified title, certification. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any comments? Trustee Reckler, go ahead. Let's do a minute comment, please.
Yeah, so thank you. You know, just once again, you know, on every presentation, I feel like I say the same things, but really, your income drivers are attendance and the free and reduced lunch or the educational benefit number. And those two numbers are critical to monitor. I know we're going to get a presentation on attendance. Attendance is even more special because not only is it money, but put the money aside, kids that don't show up, they're, it's statistically proven, research study proven that they're going to do less well in school, and there may be real significant challenges getting across the finish line. So attendance and that educational benefits number, I mean, you said it was twenty-five point seven million dollars. Boy, we'd be having a lot of different discussions if we were twenty-five point seven million dollars richer. So that's my comment. Thank you very much for the work so far. You know, it's attendance and that relationship to school, which is critical right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoyt, go ahead.
Thank you, President Smithfolds. Thank you, Ms. Moses, Mr. Carter, your staff. I also want to thank our labor partners, our families, our students. In order for us to even have a balanced budget for this year, right? We've had to make a lot of difficult choices. And as we heard tonight, the deficit still continues, still exists in the out years. So we still have more difficult conversations to have. I agree. I think that like our way to solve it, because we can't just wait for the state, is to increase our enrollment, is to increase our attendance, which feels weird as we're making cuts because we're getting so many complaints from everywhere, right? Not just about the cuts, but to increase revenues and to increase funding for things people want and deserve, right? Because our students deserve really everything that sometimes we are not able to provide them. So we have to figure out how to push past that and partner with community, parents, labor, students, so that we can actually do the opposite and get more revenue. So I'm looking forward to the conversation tonight about enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I just want to say thank you so much for the presentation. CBO Moses, you and your department are excellent explaining the budget. And it's just, it's very refreshing to be able to leave these conversations knowing that... Knowing, knowing that you have the understanding of the definition, knowing you have the understanding of what the out years look like, and to what clerk Gonzalez-Hoyt said, knowing what we have to do to change it. So thank you so much for your transparency. Thank you so much for being clear. And we look forward to talking about budget all the time because that is the way to really start tackling the problem. I am complete. Board, we are now moving on to E three.
President Smithfolds, I'm sorry, we got a vote on the motion.
Look, this is just one of those nights, man. It's absolutely, it's a mess. Let me put that down, too. I had to make myself a note. All right, we are going to vote. We are going to vote on item E two, approving the second interim for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We are going to start with our student trustees. Student trustee Papar.
Upstand.
Thank you. Student trustee Abdugaparvo. Am I hitting it at all? Am I getting close to it? It's just one of those nights. Tell me again.
Abdugaparo.
Abdugaparo.
Yes.
Okay, Abdugaparo.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler stepped away. Trustee clerk Gonzalez-Hoyt?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you very much, Board. Now, let's move to action item E three, MOU with the city of San Pablo Beacon Community Schools Initiative.
Thank you. Good evening again. This is a joint presentation between myself and CAO Neely Johnson. It's related to the MOU with the city of San Pablo Beacon Community Schools Initiative. We're asking for consideration for a multi-year MOU. The MOU spans for four years to support the implementation of the San Pablo Beacon Community Schools Initiative. It's through nonprofit lead agencies, and it supports our community schools program. There are beacon community school directors at six of our schools, Bayview, Dover, Downer, Lake, Riverside, and Helms Middle School. These beacon directors serve as community schools lead. They support the implementation of our community schools grant through the coordination of services, through care and cost teams. They lead system-focused professional developments and events that focus on positive school climate and community engagement. They support the data collection and analysis, which also includes a needs assessment. They communicate with the larger school community, and they work closely with the school site principals. Also, they work closely with district, city, and community partners to align priorities for our schools. These, this commitment is made possible through funding from Measure S in the city of San Pablo as well as in-kind contribution from our district. The MOU allows for either party to discontinue at any time with no penalty if issues such as financial impact, financial situation impacts the implementation of this program. We're asking that we approve this multi-year MOU. The fiscal impact is for the current year, one hundred and eighteen thousand. With slight increases in the three out years, we believe that in the long run, these are savings to the district as most of our schools do have this position. And in this case, it's seventy-five percent funded by the city of San Pablo. And that concludes the information for this item.
Thank you very much. Staff, are there public comments?
We have one public comment. Mark Shals, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am completely flabbergasted with a response that I heard. One percent is calculated by moving the decimal point to the left twice. I would expect a CBO to know that. Also, fifteen million plus twenty million for the two years forward is thirty, is fifteen plus and twenty plus is thirty-six million, which if I heard correctly, practically depletes Fund 17. So you may be wanting to qualify for this budget, but I'm telling you that there's something awful that's going to happen in three years from now. So Dr. Hurst, and you wonder about trust with this district? This is one of the reasons why there is lack of trust. We need people to be accurate. Thank you.
Do we have any more public comment? We are going to move to questions. Board, do you have questions about this item? Trustee Christian, you have questions?
Yeah, thank you. Getting a presentation on community school. The question I just have, is it just only in San Pablo? Is it also in Richmond as well?
Thank you for the question. This MOU only covers the San Pablo schools, but the community schools directors are in all of our schools that are participating in cohorts of the California Community Schools Initiative. But this particular MOU funds only the positions that the six schools mentioned.
Trustee, thank you, trustee Christian. Trustee Phillips, you have a question?
I have a motion when you're ready.
Thank you so much. Anyone else have a question? Dr. Hurst, you wanted to say something?
Just to comment if it's appropriate. Or should I wait?
Wait one second, and we'll go through it. Trustee Phillips, your motion, please.
I move that the board approve item three, MOU with city of San Pablo Beacon Community Schools Initiative.
I second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. We are now going to move to comments. I see a couple of people that have their hands up for comments. Trustee Phillips, your comment first, please.
They're not here. I just wanted to say Rita Xavier and Arturo Cruz from San Pablo City Council have reached out to myself and I believe at least one other board member about this item and its importance. And I agree. I want to say thank you to the city of San Pablo in particular because over time, and all of our cities have contributed in one way or another, but over time and consistently, the city of San Pablo has really stepped up monetarily to support the schools that are in its city limits. So I just wanted to say kudos to them and that I appreciate their partnership. And I think the partnership that we have with the city of San Pablo, and I know other cities, Richmond helped belt the district out, you know, which was big money quite some time ago. But I think that the partnership with the city of San Pablo is one that should be replicated across the district.
Thank you very much, trustee Phillips. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoyt.
Thank you, yeah. Trustee Phillips mentioned some of the things that I was going to say. So I'm just going to add that community schools is one of the ways that we're going to increase our enrollment and increase our attendance if it's done correctly. So I think that through the partnership that right now we have between the city, especially the city of San Pablo, labor, if we put more effort into the work, we're going to see a real change very quickly. Because community schools provides a lot more than just brick and mortar and books to students, right? It provides a full education of what students need, from food to the needs that they need to do come to school. So the partnership in San Pablo, I agree, it's a great example that we should continue to replicate and try to get the rest of our cities to support. Thankfully, through our community schools task force, some of that is starting to happen. And I know that all of our cities are concentrating in different ways, but community schools ultimately one that I think it's going to really have positive effects in our schools. So I also want to say thank you to San Pablo and to our staff for making sure we have the funding for it.
Thank you very much. Trustee Christian, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to say, yeah, I attended the community school seminar on last week. It was last week, yeah, last Thursday, I believe. And it was, it was great and awesome. Community schools, I believe in that because community schools is going to make a big difference in our area, in San Pablo, and so forth. So yeah, community schools is a great vehicle that is going to build cohesiveness with our community, families, and everybody, and really building support. So I am for community schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board, I too am for community schools. I think that we are working towards being a community school district, which is amazing. I think instead of just having schools, we're moving towards that being something that our entire district participates in, which is being community schools. CBO Moses, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you again. We cannot adopt a resolution for... We cannot adopt a resolution for Women's History Month and then not appreciate the women who are doing the work. You came in cleaning up the mess of men before you. You are still cleaning up messes of people before you. So thank you for your work with community schools. Thank you for your work with our entire budget. Thank you for your work with everything that you're doing with the district to not only get us back right, but to keep us back right because of the system changes that you're putting in. So I just wanted to take that moment to say thank you under this item and the previous item. I am complete. Board, we are now moving to the vote. All right, we're going to vote on item E3, the MOU with the City of San Pablo Beacon Community Schools Initiative. Let's start with our student trustees. Student trustee Pau Carr.
Yes.
Thank you. Student trustee Abdu Garpavo.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And it passes. Student trustee, you are being so patient with me and I appreciate that because you are too a woman that is making leadership roles and you are doing very good. I'm catching your eye. I'm trying and you were looking at me and you're saying, I see you. You are trying. So thank you very much. I am trying. All right, we are now moving to item E4, the adoption of the anti-racist statement of the Board of Education. Dr. Hearst, this is your item.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam President. On March the 8th, we held a board retreat at El Srito High School, had the majority of the board present. And then on March the 13th, the governance committee convened at Miravista K through 8, and we had a conversation about refining this anti-racist statement. I wanted to take the opportunity to read the anti-racist statement and then afterwards ask for approval of the statement. I'll turn it back over to the President, actually. And it says, "The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. To carry WCCUSD education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each board member or each member of our board, school board, individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, staff member, and community partner is a respected and valued member of the WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable toward these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to living these standards of anti-racism in our schools. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the President.
Thank you, everyone. Board, I just wanted to make sure that you also understood part of the process was the governance committee. And I think Dr. Hearst spoke to this. The governance committee reviewed the statement after the feedback from the retreat. And then our consultant helped supported us in writing this statement. So it kind of went through a two-pronged process, okay? Are there any public comments?
Yes. First public comment is Mark Schalls. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
First, I would like to say anti-racism is an awesome step. Racism is evil. It has always been evil. It should not be tolerated and it should be rooted out and fixed. Second, I think we should have an anti-sexism policy also. President Smith Folds just distinguished men versus women in the CBO position. And my comment previously had nothing to do with the gender of either or any of the CBOs we have had. I think it was in response to that that she created a sexist remark versus of men versus women in that position. I do not think that is right. It is the position and not the gender of the people that is important and the person that holds it. I have a lot of respect for CBO Moses. I like her explanations. I think she is very clear and I respect that. So I do think we also have to have an anti-sexist policy to avoid what trustee Smith Folds has just demonstrated to be sexist. Thank you.
Our last public comment is Mark and Marie Schalls. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Marie and I agree with what my husband just said. And I, I respect this board, but I don't agree with and don't like the distinction between men and women being made nor black and white or anything like that. For anti-racism and sexism to occur, we have to respect and be very sensitive to those kinds of comments. As it relates to attendance, which you had spoken of earlier, I have been a part of and witnessed how hard Principal Kibbie Kleiman has worked to get school attendance up, which is why I asked the question of this board and would like answered. What is the breakdown per community? Because I want to show the difference between what Kibbie has done at our school and what other schools have done to ensure that the attendance is there for the funds to be there for our district. Thank you.
Staff, that's all the public comment? Thank you so much. Board, do we have questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion? Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. I move that we approve the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board Anti-Racism Statement.
All seconded. Board, do we have any comments? Uh, trustee Phillips, go ahead.
I want to start by saying that I think this is a very strong statement, which is good. And I hope that the board and the district is able to realize the sentiment and goals behind this statement. That said, I do have a concern about one sentence. And I'm going to read the sentence and tell you why I have a concern. And then I'm going to make a suggestion to change it. And it's this sentence in the last paragraph. It reads, "We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward." That's the sentence. The reason that I have concern about this sentence is recently, and I I'm sorry if what I'm about to say makes people uncomfortable, but recently we've had a lot of discussion about board members holding other board members accountable. And that resulted in a board member being publicly censured and reported to the authorities, only for a state agency to turn around and say there's no evidence that a board member did anything wrong. So I'm personally concerned about the board passing statements that we are going to hold each other accountable, especially after what just happened. But I do understand the sentiment in the sentence and the suggestion that I have is to change the sentence to this. We commit, and the we is the board, that's my understanding, right? So we commit to working together to move the work of anti-racism forward. We commit to working together to move the work of anti-racism forward. I believe that that still communicates the sentiment and goal. And it also says that the board is going to be working together as a whole to do this work. But it removes the statement about one of us holding, or some of us holding others of us accountable. And I, I feel uncomfortable for the reasons that I just expressed. So that said, I am going to make a motion. And my motion, and I hope I get a second, but my motion is that we amend this statement to include that sentence that I just shared. That is my motion.
Is there a second?
All seconded.
We have two motions on the floor. We are going to vote on the, do we have any more comment? Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. Yeah, I, I mean, I appreciate, I think, where trustee Phillips is coming from. But I think that we do have to have strong language about accountability. The only people that can hold us accountable ultimately are people who elect us. But if we do something wrong, in this case, the statement saying if we do a racist act, we can't overnight be voted out or recalled, whatever, right? It takes time. And we are the examples of this community, our school community, right? So to me, censures or whatever is how we show that we're holding each other accountable. Maybe censures like too far, right? But we have to have accountability because that's what we expect Dr. Hearst, who's our only employee, to ultimately do with his staff, teachers, classified members, right? If there is a racist act, that they will be held accountable for that because we don't stand for that. And I think that to me, we got to keep the strong language. Because if we're not telling community we're going to hold each other accountable, then how can we say we're going to hold our employees accountable? It's too bad that you brought up the censure, trustee Phillips, because I want to respond because I don't think that was an accurate statement of what happened. But because I want us to move forward from that, I'm not going to ultimately like go into detail. But I don't think that that's a good example to use per se. But I respect where you're coming from. So I hope that you understand where I'm coming from too. I think that everybody, or most of us on this board, have experienced racist acts while we have been on the board alone. And to me, this statement is a way to move forward for our community because we have so much work to do. Every year we get cases of racism in our schools, right? And it starts with us making this statement of what we are going to be about and what we're not going to be about. So to me, I, I would suggest we keep it strong, but I'll go with majority. But, you know, with all, all respect to the statement, I'm going to vote no on the, amend the language. Thank you.
Trustee Reckler, you have a comment?
I do. I was going to save it for the strategic plan discussion, but since that hasn't come up yet. I mean, what is accountability? How is that defined? You know, I don't, I don't have an, I don't have an answer to that. And along with being accountable, you know, what's the consequence or the punishment? And is that always correct or is it, you know, always just or? So I really wasn't expecting to talk about that tonight. It was really a strategic plan discussion. But I think there does need to be some deep work into what that word actually means and what standards are, whose standard. You know, I, I, I think it's actually pretty deep. So I'm going to leave it at that. I'm not really, you know, prepared to discuss it further tonight. But certainly when the strategic plan was going to come up, I was going to address it. So thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I think that with this discussion, the thought that's persisting is like racism is really subjective and like to determine what you think is racist. And I think that I just wonder what does this statement do to like actually dismantle racist ideas? Because it really varies from person to person. And when trustee Phillips like mentioned that there was like, I don't know, someone reported so-and-so to the board and there was like, there was no proof of racism. I think that makes it really hard to honor this statement if it's subjective and we don't have proof. We don't like, I just think that this is a hard discussion that we don't, like the statement doesn't really have any answers or offer any solutions to. And I also want to like echo trustee Reckler's point of like, what is accountability? Like, yes, it could be calling someone out, but does that does that like dismantle racist ideas? Does that actually progress? Like, our board? That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Anyone else? Trustee Christian?
Yes, you know, we have to really look deeply in our hearts. One of my professors at my school said, "A person needs a checkup from the neck up." When we look at how things have been happening throughout our country, it's a lot of things. And this country was built on a lot of stuff that is not right. So much stuff is embedded in people and people hearts are not right. And Martin Luther King and all those civil rights leaders and all those people who put their lives on the line, they sacrificed their life. They killed them because their hearts wasn't right. So we have to look at it. Here we are in 2024. As racism, discrimination, and all that stuff is gone, no. Because people still have it in their hearts. And my question is, what are we going to do about our hearts? And it starts from our hearts, really. If your heart not right, you're not right at all. So, um, you have, we have to set the pace, hold each other accountable. What is accountability? Accountability is that we all work and hold each other accountable for the things we do. It's checks and balances in Congress and the Senate and the presidency of the United States of America. But some people feel they above the law, that they can do whatever they like and whatever they want. And they do. And we see it right now. But the thing is, what are we going to do to get ourselves to do the right thing? We all are people created by the Creator and we all have blood in us. And if you cut me, I bleed. And you cut yourself, you bleed. So yes, this is a, a, a statement that's being put forth. And the question is, what are you going to do to get it right? You should know the truth and the truth itself should set you free. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Superintendent Hearst?
Yes, I just want to just add, the process of looking at any statement or any vision statement or core values, once it's defined and agreed upon, then you have to go through a process of really sitting down and talking about what does this look like, feel like, and sound like in action.
what does this look like, feel like, and sound like in action? So I really see that as a, a next step if the board so chooses to adopt this statement. There's a much deeper conversation, and I know we're not talking about the strategic plan, but that's also, you know, the next steps when we talk about our future vision and mission and core values is really talking to everyone in the organization about what does that mean to you? And what does it look like in action in the classrooms? So when I see this statement, I see the board taking another step and having the conversation around different words that's in this statement and really defining what does it look like to them in action. And once that's determined, then you have a set of standards or a set of criteria in which, or a set of collective agreements in which you can say, this is what we said we would do? And what does it look like when we go against that? So when we talk about accountability, that's what we really are talking about, or what I'm talking about. So as a superintendent, we have policies in place and how do I make sure that people are abiding by that policy? And not just the superintendent, but everyone in the district. So that's accountability, that we're making sure that people are abiding by different policies, statements, procedures that we have agreed to.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Uh, Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Although I would like that sentence changed for the reasons that I stated, I, I just want to follow up on, on some of the things that the superintendent said. And, and something that I don't see in here. Because see, the truth is, nobody on this board works at a West Contra Costa USD school, right? We are not teaching children. Some of us have at different times in our lives, but currently, none of us are teaching. None of us are working as campus security. None of us have a regular day job at the schools. So, we can have a conversation, even though I think the sentence should be changed, we could have a conversation about holding each other accountable. But the truth is, the people that need to be held accountable for racist actions are the ones who are at the school sites. Because those are the ones, and not all of them, but those are the ones that have been mistreating these children for years. Calling the kids monkeys, making them sit on the floor and everything else. And so I'm going to just comment on what the student said, right? What action are we really talking about? Because there is nothing in here. There is no word, there is no space in here where accountability is affiliated with staff. There's no word in here about when staff is mistreating these children, what? And again, I want to qualify, it's not all staff. We have a lot of good folks in our district who work very well with our children and who care about them and love them deeply. So I don't want to have any misperception that I think that all of our staff are doing this. But it is a fact that some of them are. And there's nothing in here about what happens to you when you abuse these kids. So if we're really gonna talk it, then let's talk it, because this ain't it. Now, I'm not saying that this thing shouldn't be passed. I think it should be passed with the sentence change. But if we're really gonna have a discussion about anti-racism, me holding Demetrio Gonzalez accountable ain't gonna do a damn thing to stop racism in these schools. So, that's something that I want to put on the table. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you so much. Hold on one second, Trustee Christian. I wanna just explain a couple of things. One, this board statement is not the only anti-racist statement that we have coming. So there's the board statement, and then there's the district statement. Trustee Phillips, to your point, the district statement is the one that has the pillars in it. It's the one that holds the staff responsible, the cabinet, the district, the district staff, cabinet, teachers, staff, community, that's all, that's where that is. This statement right here is the board statement because everyone that we've talked to, they've always said, well, who is the next person I point up to? What, what do they believe? What do they believe? What do they believe? And if they don't believe the same thing, why are you holding me accountable to it? So we start at the top because we know that the fish rots from the top and the modeling is starting at the top, right? So we're starting with a board statement and then we're gonna bring in the district statement. And then we're gonna bring in all of those layers to where it hits those kids with the policy of protection. But it has to start with us. And that's what this is. This is a modeling for our entire school community to say, the board doesn't stand for it. We will not accept racist actions, behaviors. We're done. So that's where this comes from. The reason why I won't agree to your statement, your sentence being changed, is because it takes the bite out of it. We have to have not just a statement that has bark, but one that has bite. We have to hold each other accountable. And when we say, what does accountability look like, it's behavior. We have to be able to check each other's behavior because we are being models for everybody else. So it's a behavior issue. It's a behavior, it's a behavior question. So when we're asked, how does it impact? It impacts because they can say, that's the way you behave as an anti-racist. Or that's when you're not centering, uh, the voices of minority students or teachers or parents or board members or community members. That's how you de-center. That's how you dismantle. This, because we start, we create the change. I appreciate what you're saying. I cannot agree with it because if we continue to soften this, we will never be able to change it. We have to be able to attack it where it is. It's been 400 years. If it was going to change in this country, it would have changed. We have to create the change. And the way that this board creates change is by adopting policy. This is a policy. If we adopt this and we have something to say, not here. This board says, no more. This board says it's not okay. And we start with each other. If we're not strong enough to have the conversation, how do we expect teachers to have it? How do we expect administrators to have it? How do we expect district staff to call each other on it? We have to set the example. That's why the statement has to be strong. That's why the statement has to put accountability and responsibility. Responsibility is bolded for a reason in the statement. We have to be responsible to setting the standard, to creating what we want to have. And I have to tell you, we have to start de-centering things that have always existed in this country that have not worked. If we don't agree that there's a patriarchy, we're not awake. If we don't agree that the majority of this country is built to center other people, then we are not creating a reality. We have all been touched by this. And if you haven't, maybe you doing the touching. I'm complete. Dr. Hearst, you have your hand up. And then Trustee Reckler has her hand up, and then Trustee Christian. We're gonna go Dr. Hearst, Trustee Reckler, Trustee Christian. Go ahead, Dr. Hearst. You're gonna let them go first? Trustee Christian, go. Excuse me. Trustee Christian, go ahead.
You know, leadership starts from the top. From every family, from every family, starts from the top. Leaders lead by an example. We are leaders. We are leaders here on this board to set the pace and set the example. I worked at the school site for over 15 years at El Cerrito High School. Don't tell me what I don't know. Don't tell me what I don't know. And I experienced a lot of things, my brother. And I'mma just say this, you know, truth hurts, but truth should correct and get us right, that we can move in a, in the right pathway. And when we don't stand for what's right, as Martin Luther King said, we'll fall for anything. Leadership starts from the top. That's from every home, from every aspect, the top. And if we don't correct and get things right, then things will never be right. So we have to set the pace. And that's the reason why I got on this board to make a difference. I just didn't leave my position as being a safety staff at El Cerrito High School. I had sacrificed. I traveled back and forth from here to Oakland every day to go to work in the Oakland School District. I'm, I'm dealing with a lot, but you know what? I'm keep moving. But I know I sacrificed a lot and, 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 you know, so, but I do know what I've seen over the years. And I ain't not dreaming or coming up with some stuff, but I know what I'm talking about. So, leadership starts from the top. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So I was not aware that other documents or statements were coming forward. So now I would like to put a motion on the floor that this is tabled and all the documents come back at once for a comprehensive review so that we can understand how they fit and dovetail together.
Is there a second? Seeing, sorry, seeing none, that motion fails. Are you gonna put another motion on the floor, sir? That one failed for, without a second.
I would like to make, I, I have an additional comment, and I think it does have to do with what Trustee Reckler just said. But it's just additional comment.
Okay, go ahead with your comment.
I appreciate what you, and when I say you, I'm actually talking about you, President Jamila Smith-Voltz. I appreciate very much what you are trying to do. It is needed, and it is a long time coming. And now I'm gonna say something about the, the whole, board as a whole. I, I'm concerned about the bite part because I don't really think that this board is a safe space. And I don't mean a safe space for people to be racist or a safe space for people to mistreat people. But, you know what, let me just say, I don't think that this governance team is a safe space because it's not, it's this governance team. I don't think that as a whole, it is a safe space for everyone that is part of it. And that is the only reason why I suggested what I suggested. Because I think if I felt that I was in a different climate, I probably would not say anything about that sentence. But the bite part, you know, have, like you made the comment about the bite, it needs to have the bite. I am concerned about who's going to get bit and under what circumstances. And that is the only reason that I'm bringing this up. But I, I, I said my piece, but I am telling you from the bottom of my heart that I appreciate what you are trying to do. Because it's needed and it's been needed for a very long time. So however this vote goes, as far as the part that I have to play or the part that I can play in addressing the issues that we're dealing with, I will. Because other than that one sentence in a whole document, other than part of, of one sentence in a whole document, I'm completely there. So I just wanted to say to you, I see you. I believe that I understand what you're trying to do, and I think it needs to be done.
Clerk Gonzalez, thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I appreciate everybody speaking their truth. I would say that I agree with Trustee Phillips. And I think that because this governance team is not a safe space for everyone, that's why we need this statement and why we need the bite. Because feeling safe looks different for some versus others. And when I have, when I have the perception of decisions being made because of race, I don't also feel safe in certain situations. So I actually agree, and I think that we absolutely need it. I also think that we need it first because as Trustee Christian said, we lead first. Then everything else comes after, right? And, uh, we have to set the example. So I think that we need it now. We can't wait. Because we are living, we've all gotten emails, racist emails in the last week. Emails about, we need to switch the board because we are majority black and one brown. Because we are being racist against white people, right? Like, we are getting these messages now, right? And we have nothing to point out of what we stand for around this issue. So I know that, you know, some arguments, some arguments haven't been made about not doing it, right? But I think that we have to have the bite. And we have to then have the mechanisms to prepare us for what happens in certain situations. I agree with that. But I think that we gotta do it and we gotta do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? I do want to acknowledge that definitions are important. To the best of our ability, we do need to define what things look like. With our consultant, we are learning that shared definitions are extremely important. But we're also learning that through our retreats, we'll have, we have these race and equity retreats and we're learning and learning and learning. We're all reading the book about how systems are in place, that systems recreate the same model over and over and over again. Student trustees, we will get you a copy of that book. It's really, really good. The other thing that we need to focus on, or what I believe we need to focus on, is biting an elephant one bite at a time. This is one bite of the elephant. And, but we have to go back in and we have to take another bite. And that is defining accountability, making sure we have the shared understanding of what racism is. Reading the book about how systems work and how you dismantle those systems, all of that stuff is the next bite, the next bite, the next bite. This is active work. This is work that unfortunately our grandkids are gonna be doing. But if we stand now and stand ten toes down, at least they have something to point back to. At least they can say, there. That school board decided to make a statement that hopefully gets adopted and kept every single year. That we are not standing for this, that it's part of our governance handbook, it's part of our, it's part of the, the fabric of who we are at WCCUSD. You cannot have the demographics that we have at WCCUSD and not have a statement of protection. You cannot have those two things. We have a demographic of mostly black and brown children in this district. You can't have a state, you can't not, you cannot have a statement that doesn't represent their protective policy at the very top. It's literally sending people out in the rain without an umbrella. This is an umbrella. This is a umbrella of protection that says, we see you, we got you. We represent you. We're here for you. And it trickles down. It trickles all the way down to where it's felt on the site. Because they can say, wait a minute, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy said that this ain't right. You're not supposed to be treating me differently. And they can have the language behind the power that is being an anti-racist district. There's power behind the language. That's the reason why I want that sentence to stay as it is. There's power behind that language. And it does need to have bite. Because we've been beat, because we've been abused, because we've been marginalized, it has to have bite. That's just part of it. That's the only way you can push back. I'm complete. Are there any other comments before we take the vote? Because we're gonna vote on the last motion that we got first. Any more comments? Let me restate the motion so we're all clear about what we're voting on. We are voting on Trustee Phillips' motion. And his motion is to adopt this, can't even think of the word. Adopt this statement, thank you. To adopt this statement with the change that he has inserted, that he wants. So that's what we're voting on, to adopt this statement with Trustee Phillips' change. That's the first thing. Whatever that result is, we'll then see if we vote on the original motion. Okay, so now we're voting on Trustee Phillips' amended part of the statement. Let's start with the student trustee.
President Smith-Voltz, I was wondering if you could split the vote?
Tell me.
And we could vote on the amended. And we could vote on the amendment to the motion, to the resolution, and to the resolution. Cause if we vote no to trustee Phillips', uh, change, I don't want it to be like we're voting against the whole thing. That would be an ask. If not, I mean, that's fine, but we know what's, what it means.
Okay, let's go trustee Reckler and trustee Phillips. Trustee Reckler, thank you for that, clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
May we please ask trustee Phillips to repeat this sentence?
Yes. Trustee Phillips, first, you had a question or a comment?
So if the motion that I made fails, we, we just go to the original one, which is to pass it how it is. So, you know, it's not like if it fails, then there's no statement. Uh, there'll be a second vote on the original as is.
Does that satisfy you? Yes. Okay. So what we're gonna do, yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't know if it's too late to say this, but I personally agreed with trustee Reckler that we should like review it all at once because it seems like a lot of the issues have come with the fact that it's like we didn't know this was a piece of the bigger picture. And I think that we would have a more holistic and we would understand, view and like understand like the goals of this district if we reviewed it all at once. But I don't know, might be too late.
No, so what you wanna do is you wanna make a motion.
Oh, I didn't know I could do that.
Yeah, you can make motions. So what you wanna do is you wanna make a motion that you want, because her motion failed for lack of a second, right? So now you get to make a motion and say, I motioned that we bring all of the anti-racist statements back as a package deal. I'm not putting words in your mouth. It's something like that.
Yeah, yeah, um, well, I'm, I'm, I motioned that we review all of the anti-racist statements all at once together.
Is there a second?
And Reckler will second one.
Okay, so now we have three motions on the floor. We're gonna go with the very last motion first, okay?
Wait, I have a question. So I didn't know I could make motions. So am I also allowed to second things?
Yes, you can make motions.
Wow, I did not know that.
You can, you can do all of that.
Okay.
So you have every right, like we do, except that your votes are advisory. So your votes don't shift the decision, your votes advise the decision.
Oh, okay.
But you can make a motion, you can second questions, comments, all of that.
Okay, okay, that's more clear. I thought I couldn't do that cause I was like, oh, I don't know. I, I thought we don't, I don't have like a vote. So I thought that was like a vote.
Nope, you can still do that.
Okay, thank you.
No worries. Okay, so now we're gonna take your motion, okay? So we're going with the, oh, hold on a minute. Oh, oh, I got some, we got hands here. Okay, trustee Paul Carr, you go first.
Okay, so just to be clear, I can make a comment on the motion.
Yes, you can.
I respectfully don't support the motion just because I feel that racism is such a strong topic and such a prevalent issue, not only in our community, but in our world. It's not, it's not a topic to be kind of pushed aside and just wait, wait for, it's not a topic to be revisited. I think that we hold, we hold such a strong platform here in our board. And if we, like, like you said, president, President Smith Folds, if we can't have the conversation, then who can?
Thank you very much. We have a comment, clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
I guess it's, it's a, a question slash comment, more maybe for the superintendent. If, if the motion by, first of all, you both are doing great and I appreciate that you're both sharing your opinions. If the motion passes that we bring all them together, how would that work? Because the other statements are part of the strategic plan. So how would it actually work in practice if this passes? That's a question for maybe Dr. Hearst.
Yeah, so if it passes, it, it passes, it's the board anti-racist.
No, I'm sorry, the, the motion by a student trustee that it gets, it gets, it gets tabled and that it comes back with the other statements that are actually part of the strategic plan. But it just get absorbed into the strategic plan?
I would, I, I need to think about that one, sir.
Okay. Okay, I guess the reason why I ask because I, I don't know if in practicality, I guess it could be brought in the same meeting as the strategic plan, but in practicality, it's two separate documents. Which is why we're pushing to bring it first, apart from everything else that we have mentioned. So anyways, I'll, I'll be voting no because of those reasons. Thank you.
Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. So first I wanted to welcome the student trustees to the party. Grab party hat, you're here. And the second is if there are other statements, I mean, we've received a presentation on the strategic plan in a board packet. Are those statements already in that strategic plan?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay. I don't have anything further right now, except a comment.
Go ahead with your comment, ma'am.
Which is now I really feel like I wanna look at this all together just to see what those were because I can't recall and Dr. Hearst knows I dropped off a thick packet of comments about the plan. But I'm just not able to recall it right now. And I think it really makes sense to look at this all together and to see how they, how they work, how they work together and whether there are further inconsistencies that need to, you know, be worked through. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hearst.
Yeah, I think when we were discussing this, this was more of a, a board statement and really setting the tone of the district with a board anti-racist statement. So I really see them independent of one another. Just to go back to clerk Gonzalez Hoy's point as well.
Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry that we keep stretching this conversation, but I think that since racism is such a nuanced topic, I do think that, I do agree that we should look at it holistically because there's so many different aspects and we like, with this statement, we only, I feel like we only look at one aspect of racism in our district. And I think that you could have different perspectives when you look at it through all of the aspects in our district. But I do like understand the point of, of approving it first. So I am content either way it happens. I just think that it makes a lot more sense to look at it holistically because it's not like we're pushing it aside. I think that it's a topic that needs to be reoccurring. So we've had a lot of meaningful discussion here and I think that discussion should continue with like fostering new perspectives.
Thank you very much. Um, trustee Phillips?
Thank you, ma'am. I have a procedural question and it is about the other statements. Is the plan for the board to vote on those other statements? In the sense that the board is adopting those other statements as a policy? Now I see Dr. Hearst shaking his head no.
So the, the, the statement is really part of the strategic plan. It was really worked on with Dr. Rogers Ard with the district. So it's really the district's statement.
Thank you. And so for me, that is actually an issue. Because it goes back to what I raised earlier about, and I use this as an example of me holding, I could have said Mr. Gonzalez Hoy holding me accountable, right? But the discussion that we need to be having as a board is the discussion about what's happening with staff and these kids on the ground. And the, the policy that we need to be passing, in addition to an anti-racist statement for the board, the policy that we need to be passing, in my opinion, is this is what happens if you mistreat these children. But in order for the board to pass that policy, that means that it has to be a policy. And so trustee Reckler is saying, you know, I wanna, and the student trustee, I wanna hold until all of these things come back, right? Because and in that was embedded, the assumption was embedded that we were gonna vote on all of this. And that it's all going to be a policy, right? And even when President Smith Folds, when you were speaking to me and you were like, this is what we're doing first. Then the second thing we're gonna do is these other layers. I was assuming the whole time that you were talking, you and Dr. Hearst are talking about a board policy, but you're not. Because what Dr. Hearst just said is that what's gonna actually come back is the strategic plan and he doesn't expect the board to vote on that. If the board doesn't vote on it, it's not a board policy. So that really does take me full circle to what I said in the beginning. Is we're only having half of the conversation. The second half of the conversation is about what's happening out on those schools. And the plan is for that not to come back for the board to vote as a policy. Cause I heard Dr. Hearst just say that. He shook his head no. He does not, he's not bringing that back to us to vote. Now, if he wants to change that and say the board is gonna vote on it, that's different, but that ain't what he said.
So let me just clarify, sir. So I was talking about the statement that we worked on together with Dr. Rogers Ard, there is a district statement. So two different things. We have this board statement for this evening. And the plan has always been to, after the board reached consensus and voted on this statement, to then bring this back as a policy. So that was always the plan.
No, I'm not talking about this document. Once this document passes, this is policy. I'm talking about the second document, the one that actually deals with where trustee Smith Folds was talking about pillars and this, if you do this to the, I'm paraphrasing. That's the document I'm talking about because that's the document that quote unquote holds staff accountable. That's the document that I would like to see a board policy, be a board policy. And that's the document that I just heard you say is not coming back to us for a vote.
Well, I think that's the board's prerogative. I mean, if the board is saying that they want the district statement to come back as a policy, I mean, that's the board's determination.
If we don't do that, right, I'm gonna use your words, President Smith Folds. If we don't make that other statement, which I honestly think is the most important one. If we don't make that other statement, the one that deals with the interaction between the staff and the kids, if we don't make that statement a board policy, we really ain't doing nothing. That's my opinion and there's nobody where it really matters.
So trustee Phillips, we're gonna go to trustee, I have a comment to say about what you're saying because let me go here and here and then I'll come right back. And then we're gonna call the question. Okay, cause we've had a fruitful discussion. We'll call the questions because we got three motions to vote on. Trustee Reckler, go ahead, clerk Gonzalez Hoy. And then I have one thing to say.
Thank you. So just to be clear, how this is, is agendized tonight is it's agendized as an anti-racist statement. It is not, it is not agendized as new board policy or anything. It has nothing to do with policy tonight. It's just a statement. So I just, I just wanna make sure that, that you, trustee Phillips, understand what's, what's in front, what's in the agenda. Thank you.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. How many motions are there on the table? You're not able, we're not able to make a fourth, right? Okay, shit, I was just gonna do it. Um, okay. May I make an amendment?
To one of the three motions and see if it's accepted? Yes.
Never mind, it's not gonna get accepted. I, I'll just say that I, I actually agree with everything that's being stated and the sentiments behind it. I agree with trustee Phillips and your sentiments of the next step, right? I think that peeling it back a second, this is the first step to then bring all of that back, right? So I think that we're getting into the discussion about what is more important or what should come next. This is just the first part of what we believe, what we stand for and what we set the tone for. The next piece is the, the piece about staffing, which I agree is the most important, right? But that does not mean that this shouldn't also happen, right? So my suggestion is that we move forward with this tonight and that we bring back a discussion around what trustee Phillips has, has been sharing, which I think is what you were already envisioning, President Smith Folds and Dr. Hearst. So I think it can go hand in hand.
Thank you so much, clerk Gonzalez Hoy. Trustee Phillips and Dr. Hearst, uh, keep me in step, lockstep with this. So step one, hopefully adopt the statement as is, hopefully. Step two, when we get back the strategic plan, and if you look in the strategic plan, you will see superintendent's statement, you'll see, uh, president's statement, then you'll see a little bit further down in there, you'll see the district's statement on anti-racism. And that's where it has the pillars. When that comes back to the board, the board has to vote on the strategic plan. The board has to vote on the strategic plan. Yes, we, we do, correct, Dr. Hearst? The board is going to vote on the strategic plan. Now, having that embedded in there doesn't mean, well, you're saying no, but Dr. Hearst, is the board gonna vote on the strategic plan?
There'll be discussion first and then the next.
And then it comes back as action.
Yes.
So we're having a discussion on the strategic plan and then it comes back as action. I'm gonna get to you because you really wanna make sure that you have this part said. With the embedded part of this, um, anti, district anti-racism statement that's inside the strategic plan, there's room for these conversations. Because then the hope, for me, Dr. Hearst, the hope would be that then we will see policy that comes back to the board. That policy, to your point, trustee Phillips, has that bite at the lowest or the start level, right? Not the lowest level, but the start level where our students are, right? So it says, let's say something happens to you in school. Let's say that there's a student that calls you a derogatory name. Uses racialized harm against you. Then there is policy that says that is unacceptable and that's attached to a discipline matrix. It's attached to a consequence. It's attached to, this is the next step that has to happen because there was racialized harm. All of that is coming. We cannot get there until we start here, in my humble opinion. That's why I'm asking for us to start. So we can get all the way to the point, you know what happens if you skip class. There's a consequence, right? You know what happens if you bring a weapon to school, there's a consequence. I want us to get to, if you use racialized harm, if you use weaponized language, if you do something that causes racialized harm, we have a consequence because we have a policy. We have a matrix, we have all the things we need to have that protective, tangible, touchable policy in place. But I'm asking the board to start here with what the statement that we have as is. That's the request tonight. But please know that we don't finish till we finish. We gotta get all the way through it. That's where I'm coming from. Trustee Phillips, you have the last comment and then we're gonna start with voting on our motions. Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanna clarify that the board voting on this, which trustee Reckler brought up, or the board voting on the strategic plan, does not make any of that board policy. The board votes on resolutions all the time, right? We just voted on a resolution for Women's History Month. Last month, we voted on a resolution for Black History Month, right? And we say, and, and it, and I'm not gonna say it doesn't mean anything, but it's a statement. And, and I'll just put it that way, right? And so I'm not saying we shouldn't have an anti-racism statement. And I'm not saying there shouldn't be a district anti-racist statement, okay? But what I am saying is for us to actually have the bite that you're talking about, it's not statements. It's policies and they need to be voted on as policies. Particularly when we're talking about the interaction of the students and the staff. That's all I wanted to clarify. But thank you for giving so much time to this discussion because it is an extremely important one.
And trustee Phillips, I wanna agree with what you said. We have to have policy. I think it has to be a both and, but you are absolutely correct that if we do not have policy, we don't have anything. We have to have policy and Dr. Hearst is hearing us all very clearly that we want policy about anti-racism, about racialized harm. We want that policy brought back to the board so we can vote on it. We're gonna vote now, thank you for that. We're gonna vote now on our three motions. Everybody pay attention because it may get a little complicated. So we're gonna vote for the last motion first. The last motion was to have all of our anti-racist statements, statements come back to the board as one packet. It was motioned and it was duly second. We are now voting on if we want all of the anti-racism statements to come back as one packet. That's what we're voting on, okay? Trustee Paul Carr.
No.
Thank you. Trustee Abduga Parvo.
I'm staying.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Christian.
So this is the first, the first one?
This is the last one. So we're voting on if we wanted to come back as a packet or So we're voting on if we wanted to come back as a packet or if we wanna take it separately.
If we wanna take it separate?
No. This vote is if you say yes, then you're saying you want it to come back as a packet. If you say no, then you want it to come back separately. We want it. Mm-mm. If you vote yes, you're saying I want these statements to come back together as a packet.
As a whole packet.
As a whole packet, if you vote yes. If you vote no, you're saying we're gonna vote on this tonight.
Okay.
Okay. What's your vote, sir?
No.
Thank you for that, trustee Reckler, your vote, ma'am?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
No.
And I'm a no, that motion fails. Now we're going to the second motion. The one that was in the middle. You're killing me, sir.
I was gonna ask you if I can restate the motion because it's been so long.
That you absolutely can because. I need it.
I ain't trying to kill you.
So this is what we're gonna do. Now we're voting on trustee Phillips' motion. Trustee Phillips is going to restate the motion, go ahead, sir.
The motion is to change this sentence. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. To change that sentence to. We commit to working together to move the work of anti-racism forward.
Okay, so now we're voting on trustee Phillips' motion. He just read the change. So we're voting on if we agree with trustee Phillips' change. So vote yes if you agree, vote no if you do not agree. Okay, here we go. We're good? All right, here we go. Trustee Palcar, do you agree or no?
Uh, I abstain.
Okay. Trustee Abduga Parvo, do you agree, no, or you abstain?
Yes.
You agree with the change. Trustee Phillips, do you agree with the change?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, do you agree with the change?
Can you come back to me, ma'am?
Yep, I can come back to you. Trustee Reckler, do you agree with the change?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, do you agree with the change?
No.
Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy is a no. Trustee Christian, do you agree with the change?
No.
Trustee Christian is a no. Uh, President Smith Folds, you agree with the change? I am a no. That motion fails. Now, we're moving to the first motion. The very first motion we had was to adopt this statement as is. Leaving it completely alone, okay? Now, if you want to adopt it as is and leave it completely alone and accept it the way it is, you vote yes. If you don't want to adopt it at all, you vote no. Okay, here we go. Trustee Palcar, do you adopt, do you, yes or no to the statement, ma'am?
Yes.
Great. Trustee Abduga Parvo, yes or no to the statement, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, yes or no to the statement, sir?
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, yes or no to the statement, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, yes or no to the statement, ma'am?
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, yes or no to the statement, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Yes, yes, yes. It passes. Thank you very much, board. We now have to.
Point of order.
Extend our meeting, yep. We now have to extend our meeting. This was a very fruitful discussion, but we have to extend the meeting in two minutes or we're gonna be.
President Smith Folds, make a motion that we extend until 12 o'clock. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I wanna change that motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. I, um, I'm motion that. We extend until 11:00 PM and we table our discussion items for a special session.
Okay.
So that we can bring them back quickly.
Okay. Is there, so the motion is that we extend to 11? Tabling our discussion items and bring it back at a special meeting, is there a second? There's a second. So, uh, trustee Phillips, second. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
What is a special meeting?
So a special meeting is one where we have that's not on the current agenda, right? So we have meetings every other week. A special meeting we would have in between that time, or you would have a meeting. A day before a board meeting or a day after, it's just a special meeting that we look at the calendar and say, hey, let's do this again. But let's not wait to the board meeting to do it. That's a special meeting.
Okay, thank you.
No worries. Okay, so now. It's 10 o'clock, all right, here we go, vote, we gotta vote. So we're voting to extend to 11 to table into a special meeting, the discussion items. Trustee Palcar, your vote, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips. Thank you, trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Uh, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I want to say I am so sorry. I am so, 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 so very sorry to the, um, the staff that was here to present. I know that this has kinda been pushed and pushed and pushed. And I apologize, we're trying to get ourselves together. Um, we are working very hard and we do value your time and we really wanna have this discussion. We just wanna have it when we're fresh. And we wanna have it when we can go in depth because it needs to be an in-depth conversation. And we wanna go where we're valuing everything that you guys have to say. But I do apologize, I, I, I'm, I'm very sorry. But I thank you so much for coming and we will see you at the special meeting. But it's just about you, friends, it's just about you. The special meeting will be just about you, but thank you so much, I apologize. Okay. Now, we are moving on to action item. Number six, oh, nope, nope, nope. Action item number five, adoption of the WCC USD Governance Handbook. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, this is your item, sir.
Thank you, um, President Smith Folds. Board, uh, we are bringing back for action the handbook, this is the final version. Uh, if you all recall in the fall, we received feedback from all of you on changes that you wanted to see. So if you'd like to pull it up, I will go over the five changes that were implemented. According to the feedback that we heard specifically from two board members. Um, the first one, some page 29, there was an incomplete paragraph, it is now complete and it's been fixed. Um, second one, page 43, uh, we had a clarification on our ability to post on social media. Um, and the question was about whether or not we could actually set that precedent, uh, so we eliminated that. Um, I think trustee Phillips, that was from you. Um, so we eliminated it completely. Um, page 39, um, we also unhighlighted a portion that was highlighted by accident. Page 38, there was a question about how a mediator is chosen in case of conflict. And it was clarified through the process, um, also with legal counsel's, uh, feedback. And page 39, there was a clarif- clarification, uh, there was a request about eliminating the piece about the Ethics Committee. Uh, which, uh, we did not agree with, so we put it back in and, um. We wrote it according to what legal counsel recommended and according what CSBA recommended in that situation. So now it reflects that process. Um, so that now it's finalized for you all to, um. To take action tonight. Thank you, President Smith Folds. And thank you staff for supporting, uh, those changes in their work.
Thank you very much. Do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. Our only public comment is Ivy, please unmute yourself.
Hi, um, good evening, how are you? Okay, um, my name is Ivy Shin, I'm from, um, my senior graduate Pinot Bari High 2019. For last section two weeks ago, five hours. I put out the minutes, see how many people support, uh, our prin- principal KB. And you guys talk about, um, leadership. You talk about not just say. How we process. Check out during the. The. The communication with parents and the student. Lot of parent and kids want to leave the school and show you. Your world, the financial loss. But KB showed that he wants student to go to school, study. You know, last week, we have rally, right? Lot of employee coming, the police office coming, mail coming, even, even in the KBS. If you really think about student first, think deeply, when you sleep. You think about what's arising to do.
Thank you very much. Community, we wanna remember that we're commenting on the items that are, that we're discussing at this very moment. Are there any more public comments about the adoption of the WCC USD Governance Handbook?
Yes, we have. No, we complete.
Thank you so much. Board, do we have questions about the adoption of the WCC USD Governance Handbook? We're gonna do three questions, trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So on page nine, there is no link to a code of conduct, so I just wanna point that out. And then. You know, I have a lot of thoughts and questions about conflict of interest right now. And so what I would like to understand. Uh, for the conflict of interest. Part. Which is located on page 10. What I would like to understand is. Does this align with the FPPC, all laws of the FPPC? Um, especially their book on conflict of interest? Or is it different in any way from the California Code? And if so, if it is different, how is it different?
Sorry, thank you so much, trustee Reckler.
I, do you want, I have one more, I don't know if you wanna answer that or if I, I could ask another question, if you wanna ask my third question.
Let me make sure I have the second question that I heard. The page 10, the conflict of interest, does it align with the FPPCC? And if it doesn't, how is it different? Correct? That was the, okay, and can you repeat your first question?
Is that there, uh, on page nine.
Oh, the link.
It references the code of conduct, but there's no link and I think that there should be a link.
Okay. Um, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, it's your pleasure, you wanna take them one at a time or?
Uh, sure, uh, definitely the link is something we can fix. Um, the second question, um, our lawyers reviewed the handbook, so. I'm making an assumption because I don't have that answer in front of me, but is that when they reviewed it, they must have double-checked that it was aligned to law. Um, so it was reviewed by our law firm. Um, but I will get confirmation. Of that question, for sure.
Okay, and then if I may continue with one more question, which is on page, uh, 39 on this Ethics Committee. So. What I'm interested in is. Once again, it's a process-related question or about this Ethics Committee, how it's chosen. How these two board members are chosen who are not involved in the complaint. And whether they have biases or opinions or close relationships. Um, that might come into play in the investigation of, um, you know, whatever the situation is. And my other concern is I wanna understand what kind of evidence is being gathered and if it's sensitive in nature, what happens with that? Um, and they're hearing testimony from all the parties involved, you know, I don't know, it makes me feel, I have a lot of questions about that.
If you, if you don't mind passing there so that I can answer, I'd be happy to do so.
And I'm done.
Oh, you're done, oh, I'm sorry, okay, good. Um, so, President Smith Folds, I'm, I'm, thank you through, through you. Um, so that is, those are all great questions. Um, the process, um, is that if there is a complaint. The complaint is sent to the board president and staff. Then, um, I'll just, I guess, speak on what my experience was. Then, uh, if it's titled on a complaint, it goes to the title and office. If it's a complaint on a board member's behavior or something different, it gets sent to a third-party investigator. Um, so that there's no allegations of, um, using someone in-house that might have relationships or not. Um, then according to what legal counsel shared with us, the board president appoints the ethic committee's members. Hopefully people who are not part of the complaint. Especially if the complaint is about more than one board member. Um, then those individuals send the recommendation to the rest of the board. Um, after they meet with the third-party consultant who did the investigation and legal counsel and Dr. Hurst. Um, if the board president is part of that, then the board president and the other board member. Um, also get to, um, hear through writing. Feedback from the board member or board members who are affected. I wanna see if evidence, what, the evidence that it's gathered, that is a really good question. All the evidence, for example, when I was president, was collected by the third-party, uh, investigators. So I, I actually don't know what happened to any of that evidence. Um, except that evidence that is shared with the board, it's kept confidential. Um, and then. Sorry, trustee Reckler, can you repeat the last part of the question? After evidence?
Yeah, like, evid- if evidence is sensitive, um. You know, I wasn't really thinking about a third-party investigator, I was thinking about. I don't know, you know, I, I don't know, but you come across something that's sensitive. How is that handled? Um, are there? Limits on what a board member can know? Does it shut off at some point about what people can know? Um, I mean, I don't, I don't really know, but just gathering evidence seems, um. Not everybody may have that ability or, um. You know, I don't know, I just have questions about that, um, and confidentiality and, um. Things getting really personal, you know, I don't know. Um, there is no direct reporting relationship between any of the people here. So it's not like there is an employer-employee relationship that might, you know, kick in there. We report to constituents, not to each other. And the relationship here is all based on trust and goodwill, um, or bad will. And so I'm just. Digging into that a little bit.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think you're making some really good points. I will share with you that the three complaints that I got when I was president, it was all handled by either legal counsel or third-party investigators. So, um, all the evidence and all the confidential information was actually collected by staff. Um, and, and, uh, maybe, Dr. Hurst, you could answer what happens to all the final reports that are confidential. Uh, in the district office, if you don't mind.
Yeah, all final reports are submitted to HR and everything is confidential. And also there's a letter that goes out to the individuals as part of the investigation. But as far as a final report that's maintained just by HR and then of course, legal counsel.
Thank you very much. Board, anyone else have questions? You have another question, trustee Reckler?
I do, which legal counsel reviewed that, reviewed this, who is SR791725?
There were actually two legal counsel firms that reviewed the handbook. Um. Harold Freeman and, um, what's the other, uh, firm?
AALR.
Thank you. So we had two law firms review it at two separate times. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
President Smith Folds, I move that we accept the handbook. The Governance Handbook.
I'll second that. Board, any comments? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
So one comment is a formatting comment and I don't think the document needs to be held back for this. But there are a number of what is called in the typography world of, they're called orphans and widows. And, um, what it means is that, you know, like, the sentences like don't belong to their paragraphs. So on page 32, high school family assignments and graduations is cut off from its sentence. So that would need to be adjusted. At the bottom of page 34, agenda setting is cut off from its paragraph. Um, so if somebody could go through and just do a check, um, to make sure everybody lives together. That would, uh, that, uh, page 39, site visits is cut off from its paragraph. So that, those are immaterial changes. That, uh, uh, should be corrected, but it's, you know, it shouldn't hold up the document. What should hold up the document though. What should hold up the document, though, is a clarification on conflict of interest. I'm obviously very sensitive about that right now, and I want to know whether this abides to the law, or if there are any changes in it. And I'm, and I think that's an important question to answer. And if there are changes, and it doesn't abide by the law, I want to know what, where, and why. And then, I'm also really uncomfortable with the Ethics Committee. I think there is some more information, or, you know, a little bit more thought that needs to go into that. I certainly have my own opinions about what happened to me, and the way that committee was put together, and perhaps some existing relationships that, you know, might not have been as clean. I don't know for sure, but, you know, I think this is important stuff, having been through this. And I, I want, I'm, I'm not going to be voting to adopt this tonight in the statement, in the state that it is. Thank you.
Any other comments? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Thank you. I said this during the century debate, and I'm going to say it again. This board, in my opinion, is making a huge mistake by enshrining that any member of the public can send a complaint and start an outside investigation. I understand that it sounds transparent. I understand that it sounds like we are making ourselves accountable. But what we are really doing is creating open season on current board members and future board members. Board members, right now, I'll give you an example of what I mean. There is talk about recalling four board members, right now. So what happens when people just start sending stuff in? Not because I did anything, or not because you did anything, or not because you or you did anything, just because I like you and I want you here. This is going to be open season on board members. And I think that this board is making a huge mistake, and I think that it's going to come back to bite board members, current and future board members, in the behind. I seriously think that this board should not do that. If somebody has a complaint, they could send it to the Board President, they could send it to the superintendent. But creating this kind of process, where John Doe is PO'd at trustee Christian, so he sends something in and starts an investigation? Think about all of the turmoil that we've had in this district. Think about board members that we've had in the past, where people were literally trying to put them in jail. Think about Madeline, and Charles, and Todd, and all of the craziness that went on around them. And, and I'm just going in the past, because we could talk about people important now, and not, and, and in the more recent, you know, history. I, I, I think that this is a huge mistake. So that's the first thing that I, I want to say. Obviously, it's the board's prerogative, but if it happens, I will definitely come back and say, I told you so. So, that's that. The second part of, of this process that I'm describing is, you know, I bet you two law firms did say, yeah, do that. Because you know how much money they're about to make? This district has been embroiled in turmoil since before any of us were actually born. Complaints about this, complaints about that, complaints board members did this, complaints board members did that. All of those complaints are going to go to an outside law firm, who's going to bill us to do all of those investigations. I bet you they did say, do this, and that it's okay to do it. It's good for business. And we can't afford that. So those two things that I want to say. And the last thing that I want to say, what, third thing I want to say is, thank you for changing the thing about social media. And then, this is the prepared statement that I'm going to say, but I had to say those other things. I'm going to read it, so I get it right.
Trustee Phillips, I'm going to interrupt you. I was wondering if President Smith-Bosse allows, could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
On what you just said?
About?
Because?
Yes, sir.
About the accountability piece, just because I want to make sure that we get it right. You know, so I did want to ask you, in good faith, like, what would be the alternative to this process? Because honestly, I think that the governance team came at it from not knowing what alternative to use, and we, when we contacted CSBA and lawyers, maybe with alternative motive, but those were the best practice, right, process? And I, I fear that just letting, giving it to the, the Board President to have just the power to make the decision on the complaint without an actual process, will lead to actually more, not saying President Smith-Bosse, but any president, will actually lead to more issues about who is in charge, right, and whether or not that person likes you or not, and whether or not they will take that complaint seriously, or whatever, right? So I guess that you've been here the longest. That's, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but I'm saying, like, from your experience.
Some people think that's what happened.
From your experience, like, if you don't think this is a good process, from what has been shared with us as best practice, then what would be your alternative? Because just leaving it limbo, to me, feels like actually it could be worse, right, for future boards? If, if it's okay to us.
So, that really takes the steam out of, like, the last thing that I was going to say? I, I would need to think about that, and, and get back to you. And there have been things that we voted on before, where I didn't agree with it, but I said, if you're going to do it, I think this is the best way to do it. And so I appreciate you asking, and I don't have a problem, like, mulling that over, and getting back to you. And it may be, well, I don't have a problem mulling that over and getting back to you. But I, I, I actually do believe that that open season thing that I'm talking about, I think that's going to happen. And, and I also think the fees to investigate all of that is going to be exorbitant. And once it's enshrined, when this board, or the next board, is like, oh, my God, this was a mistake, that board is not, unless they got a lot of gumption, they are not going to be able to go back and undo that, because the fire that they're going to catch when people say, oh, you're trying to undo it because you're all crooks and you're wrong, and da-da-da-da-da, da-da-da-da-da-da. This, this is like putting something in a union contract. It's going to stay, and it's not going to be beneficial. But if, I, I don't have any problem mulling it over, the question, but I'll show you why it undermines this, this last part that I was going to say. Even though I had to say the other part, I respectfully decline to participate in this process, because I am concerned that the new handbook may be used as a sword against certain board members. That's how I was going to close it out, or that is how I'm closing it out, which makes it hard for me to come back and answer your question. You get the point. But I, I'll mull it over, but, but as, as far as, like, officially being part of this process, I'm stepping back now.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President Smith-Bosse. I mean, I, I do think that Trustee Phillips put doubt in my mind a little bit. But again, I mean, I think that this process is the only process that I've heard that we can use, right? So I guess I would look to folks for alternatives, right? Because this wasn't intended to be, like, gotcha. This wasn't intended to be things like that, right? It was just intended to put into the handbook what is actually already happening, maybe what was happening under me, right? Like, maybe that's the way that I should say it, but because I didn't know different, right? I was going for advice to the people who were supposed to go to advice, right, our legal counsel and CSBA. So I, I mean, I don't know how you feel, but I would be.
Can I tell you how I feel?
Yes, okay.
So this is how I feel. If we're saying that this is open season on board members, we're not answering the question. The question is, why would the community intentionally go after board members who they know may not have done something? So there's a question underneath the question. So if it's rooting that out, then we're actually tackling the problem. If we have community out there that says, I'm going after this trustee because I don't like her, and I, or him, and I know that I can file a complaint, and I know that I can then start a third-party investigation, and I know that that's going to cost the district money, we have a community problem. We have a problem to where we need to reach out and reach past and reach down to our community, and reach up to our community and say, listen, you have other ways of having a conversation with me. If you think that I'm doing something wrong, feel free to come to me and let's have a conversation, but that's setting a standard at the board level. But if you think that I did something wrong, you should exercise your right. You should exercise your right to file a complaint, and you should exercise your right to then have us go through the process. But if we don't have a process, that's where you have the implicit biases that come in, because that's when anybody can do anything. But there has to be a process, but we need to start asking those questions, because they breed data. If everybody on this board has three or four or five complaints, we need to check each other and check the people who are doing it. Because if it all comes out faulty, we have a community issue. If it comes out founded and substantiated, we have a board issue. But we can't run from the issue. We have to have leadership that's saying, I stand in the public. I stand in the public. I, I stand in the public. Their judgment, whatever it is, but there's a process if you want to have a problem with me. And this creates a process. Will it, will it create a wildfire? I don't know. But if it does, I have other questions that I want to ask. Why do I have fifteen complaints against me, and all fifteen were found unsubstantiated? Who's doing it? Why are they doing it? How do we go to the community and correct that and say, yo, it's something, something ain't right here? There's some biases here. There's something to where you just are not following another process to duly unseat me, or to unelect me, or whatever it is, but you're going this route because you believe that it's easier, or cost-effective, or it makes it a big stink, or whatever it is. We get to ask those questions, but we can't run from the process, because to your point, Trustee Phillips, if we vote this in, right, and another board tries to vote it out, and they're going to say, well, you're trying to hide something, what are they saying about us now? If we don't have a process, if we don't set it up as we're saying it's entrenched, we're standing on our values and our ethics and our integrity, then what are they saying about us now? We can't move because there's a fear, or there's a wondering about what will happen. What we can do is say, yo, it, it is what it is. This is a process. This is an unbiased process, that if you got a problem, this is the route that you can go. But we also need to put the alternative out there. If you have a problem, you can also go this route. You can call the superintendent, you can call the Board President, you can call any one of these trustees and say, I have an issue with board member X, and I need you to be an inassessor. Can you help me with that? Now, if we have a community that's not willing to do that, then we need to ask ourselves, have we set ourselves up to be that friendly? To be that, have that level of unreasonable hospitality? Listen, I've been called everything but a child of God in the last three weeks, but I'm not running, I'm not hiding. It is what it is. That's leadership. You step in it. You don't step away from it. I am complete. Trustee Phillips, go ahead, sir.
So I think that you just gave Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy an excellent alternative to what's in this Governance Handbook. You gave multiple alternatives without me having to mull anything, so thank you for that. And that comment is really, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. I received an email, I'll give you an example, right? I received an email that said, this board, except one person, needs to be removed by any means necessary. By any means necessary. Now, I'm paraphrasing the email. I could pull it up and read it verbatim, without saying the person's name, but the "by any means necessary," "removed by any means necessary," that's a quote. And so when you have folks saying things like, remove, remove you guys by any means necessary, yes, you have people who will make complaints that are unfounded, because they want you gone by any means necessary. So is that the majority of the community, obviously? It's not. We all got voted in. I mean, you know, but, you know, that is, that element is out there, and I think everybody, at least four people on the board, knows that. Right? And I think that it would be wise to take that into consideration, as you're setting policies to hang yourselves. And not running. All of you have seen me up here for quite some time, and every now and then, I will really put my foot in it. Say all kinds of stuff, do all kinds of stuff. I'm not running from anything, right? And I don't think that anybody thinks that I run from anything. But this is not my whole life. This is an important part of my life, but this is not my whole life. I have other things that are important to me, and I believe you all have other things that are important to you too. And as far as being leadership on the board is concerned, yes, that's important, and yes, it is a privilege to be in these spaces. But the truth is, all of you have equally are more important things going on in your lives outside of this space. And so I don't think that people need to be putting those other things in danger, because they want to show how strong they are as leaders in this space. And those other things could be your family, it could be your job outside of here, because don't think that what happens in this space cannot affect you in other spaces. We get paid eight hundred dollars a month. And I get it, this is important, and I get it, we need to set an example. I get all of that. But this is not my life. And I don't want to put anything in my life. I've had people say that because of what I was doing in here, or I didn't let you make a comment on my Facebook page, that you're going to report me to the state bar for violating your First Amendment rights. I've had people say all kinds of crazy stuff to me. Well, you know what? That affects my job, and that affects my livelihood, and how I take care of my family. So I'm not participating in this. I dig it, if this is what you guys want to do, but I, I'm not participating in this, and I'm not saying anything else. It's, it's on the board.
Any other, thank you, Trustee Phillips. Any other comments? All right, we are headed to the vote. What we are, you have a comment? Go ahead, sir.
I apologize, President Smith-Bosse. I don't know if it's the lateness, or what it is, but I do want to make sure that we do this right, and I'm not speaking out of fear. Although I started thinking about the things that you started saying, right, Trustee Phillips? But I do think that we have to have the right process, right? I think that we should not do it simply because people are fearful that we're going to hold them accountable, or hold each other accountable. But I do think that we got to take in consideration what's been shared, right? I think that the final product, there might be individuals that still might not be happy at the end. But I think that maybe we refer one last time to the Governance Committee to review this section specifically. If the Governance Committee ends up saying, you know what, after conducting a little more understanding and alternatives, whatever, says, you know, we're still sending this, as it, as is, well, then, that's what it is, right? And then, but if not, and if we bring alternatives, then we can include them. So I would suggest, I would make a motion that we refer to the Governance Committee one last time to come back for action, after taking consideration what we heard tonight.
This particular section?
No.
No, the entire handbook?
Yes, because then I, I wouldn't want, then, just because, like, oh, we passed the rest, we don't need this part, like, this part is part of the handbook, right? And just because, maybe there might be individual, and then the visual, or individuals that might not like it, does not mean that we shouldn't do it, right? So we just say, let's send back the whole thing, and we'll bring it back.
So that's the motion. The motion is to send back the entire Governance Handbook. The motion is to send back the entire Governance Handbook to the Governance Committee and then bring it back. Is there a second?
For their next meeting.
For the next meeting, April the 10th. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Christian, a second. Any comments? I do have a comment. It'd be quick, I promise, because we're running out of time. I want to let you know that I hear you and I understand that it is a, I understand that you take care of your family and that is a huge concern. I don't want you to think that I don't hear you. And I hear that you too take care of your family and that's a huge concern. I would be remiss if I didn't say I don't sit in a different seat of privilege, right? The concern that you have about making sure that you take care of your wife and your kids and that's a, that's a level of understanding that I may not have at the position that you sit in. So I do validate that. I agree with you, Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, that, or I'm sorry Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, that we need to look at it in totality. I just offer you this. I offer names, Cesar Chavez, I offer names Malcolm X, I offer names Megar Evans, I offer names Martin Luther King, I offer names Fannie Lou Hamer, I offer names that out there. I understand who we are on this board and this is localized politics. This is local education policy. But if not us, who? If not, when? If not now, when? So there's a level of, yes, this is not our whole lives, but this is a very important role that we were elected into to do. And we owe it to ourselves. We owe it to the students that are looking at us. We owe it to our families. We owe it to everyone to stand in this position. No matter what, and any means necessary is scary because you and I both know what that means. And I think the majority of the board knows what any means necessary can mean. I think it scares us and we should be scared of that. But being afraid doesn't mean we don't progress. It doesn't mean we don't do it anyway. It doesn't mean that we don't continue. It means that we're thoughtful. We're thoughtful. It means that we're thoughtful. It means that we are careful, but it also means we keep moving. I want us to kind of frame things around that because this is a change agent board. This is the first time a board has looked like this in WCCUSD. We are creating change. This is the first time that we've had a superintendent that looks like this and a cabinet that looks like this. We are creating change and that comes with shaking things. We have to fight back the system and the status quo. Trustee Phillips, to your point, if it comes, I think it's already been there, but we're just shining a light on it, right? Because it's already coming. Like you said, four board members are trying to be recalled. But there's a process. If they go through the process, you got to go through the process. But we still come here every other week and we stand in our business because we are setting an example for every other person that we say, hey, it's February, read about these people. Hey, it's May, read about this person. Hey, it's March, read about this person. But if we don't show them the way and show that it's not something done in the past, it's something done right now. Look to your left, look to your right of your school board members and your student trustees that are standing on business. If you want to come after us, come after us. Our hands are clean. And if they're not, maybe we shouldn't be here. We have to be above reproach. I am complete. Yes, sir.
Sorry, President Smith Foles, if I may, just very quick. I think that it's not so much, it's not so much fear for me. And I don't know if this is also shared by Trustee Phillips. And I appreciate your sentiments. I think that in the last few weeks, if I can just be transparent, when, after we held the censure and we held Trustee Ruckler accountable, I got two messages sent to me that they were going to hold my wife accountable because she was a teacher in our district. And I have not shared this with Dr. Hurst, I'm not sure with anyone, but that's the fear that comes to me. It's not so much about me and whether or not I get a complaint about First Amendments. Like, that does not bother me because I can stand behind what I do up here. But it's about the fear of others. Sorry, I don't want to get emotional because I know Dr. Hurst gets uncomfortable. But, but when I got those two messages after, right, of like, you are holding white people accountable in a different way, we're going to hold, like, I, I don't know what to do with them, right? And I think that to Trustee Phillips, I think there are people who are so weak to say things like that. Like, a complaint is the least of my worries, right? And, and I have honestly rethought about my role on this board. Because to Trustee Phillips, like, there's more important things to me than my position here, right? My wife and my daughter are more important than anything else. So that's the fear that I'm currently carrying, that I know that you carry on your back every day as a black woman in this country. And I will never be able to relate to that. But I think that's something new for me and maybe I am reacting with fear a little bit. But I want to make sure we do it right because obviously it's not just about us up here, but about those that depend on us as well. So it's just something that, that, I'm, I'm having a really hard time because I always think of you as the most courageous among us and you're speaking truth and, and, and I'm, I'm having a hard time not thinking about those messages that I got, right? About my wife, right? So, so anyways, I just wanted to put that out there because I didn't want people to think I'm just being one way because there's more behind what's going on.
I appreciate, oh, Trustee Phillips, okay. I appreciate everything that you guys have said. I want to make sure that I get Trustee Phillips' comment in. And then we are, it was motion and duly seconded, correct? Yes, okay. Trustee Phillips, your comment, sir? And then we can move to the vote if no one else has a comment. Go ahead, sir.
Very briefly, a perspective. So I was in law school during nine eleven. And I was going to leave law school to join the military. And one of my good friends, Dominic Mitchell, and one of, and, and one of our deans, Shawna Marshall, talked me out of leaving law school to join the military. When I got out of law school, I joined the reserves. So I said, I'm going to finish and I finished and I joined the reserves and joined the Navy. Dying, right? So not that anybody wants to die, but when I joined, I knew that that was a possibility, but I did it anyway, right? I'm at a different space right now in my life, right? And so when I think about Malcolm, I also think about Betty. When I think about Megar, I also think about Merlin. When I think about Martin, I also think about Coretta. And I'm not, my, and my wife is not trying to be Coretta, Merlin, or Betty. I have to be here. And I don't, and I don't mean that in the sense that anybody's going to try to kill me or assassinate me, right? But I have to leave this space and go to work tomorrow and do my job and keep my job. And I don't need unnecessary confusion surrounding me because I choose to come up here and volunteer. I'm telling you this right now, as a black male on this board with the history of this board, people have been looking for me to commit crookedness since I got here. People, I'm, since I got here. I tried to cross every T and dot every I because I know what's happening. People, people have tried to bribe me in this building to take votes. The fact that I'm here, and yes, people get pissed off about things I say from time to time and, and votes that I make from time to time, but the fact that I'm here about to finish eight years and there's no scandal around me, there's a reason for that. I'm not dirty. I do what I'm supposed to do. But that's not the point for some of these people. And I just don't think that this board should be putting itself in jeopardy. And I think that's what it's doing. I know I said I was going to shut up, but I do feel strongly about this, so I said it again. Because when each one of us does that, it's not just us, it's also the people that depend on us. I'm really done. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to go to the vote. Let me repeat what we're voting on. So we're all clear. We are voting for the Governance Handbook to go back to the Governance Committee for a additional look through, for additional look through. And then to come back to the board on April the 10th. April the 10th, sir? April the 10th, under action. That's what we're voting on, okay? All right. Trustee Pau Carr.
Sorry. Hopefully the next board meeting, but we don't have a governance meeting before April 10th. So we're going to be able to do that.
So, so to go, we are asking that the Governance Handbook goes back to the Governance Committee and then come back to the board. Okay. All right, we ready? All right, Trustee Pau Carr, go ahead, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Phillips, go ahead, sir.
I'm staying.
Trustee Christian, go ahead, sir.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Ruckler, go ahead, ma'am.
Ruckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, go ahead, sir.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. We are now, with 14 minutes left, we are now going to go to Dr. Johnson. Ma'am, this is your item E6, Board Appointment, Board, Board Appointment Voting Member to the Contra Costa County Adult Education Consortium. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, this is for our, the Association of Adult School, it's an association, excuse me, of adult school programs within West Contra Costa. And we have a new principal of our adult education program. So we would like to assign him to this role so he can represent our adult education program for West Contra Costa.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, President Smith Foles, just running to the restroom. I appreciate that. Any questions? Okay, could I have a motion, please?
What, what motion? Who are we?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're, we're moving to appoint Mr. Brooks to be the, our appointee to the, our voting member to the Contra Costa County Adult Education Consortium.
His first name Gregory?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we appoint Mr. Gregory Brooks to be our voting member to the Contra Costa County Adult Education Consortium.
Second.
Thank you. Is, are there any comments? Okay, let's move to a vote. We'll start with Trustee, oh, sorry about that. Trustee, it's going to be my first time saying your name, so I apologize. Would you mind sharing your last name again?
It's Pau Carr.
Pau Carr. Please, go ahead.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Trustee, Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Ruckler?
Ruckler, yes.
And I'm a yes, so I'll pass unanimously with President Smith Foles absent. Thank you. We're going to now move to the MRAD report. Mr. Freeze, if you could do like a super quick presentation because we have 10 minutes and we still have to get to contracts, that'd be great.
Yes, I can make it really fast, though. We're asking the board tonight to adopt Resolution 2324-59, directing the preparation of the annual engineering report for the Maintenance and Recreation Assessment District, known as MRAD. Once this is approved, we'll draft the engineering report and be bringing that back at the end of April.
Thank you so much. Before I move to questions, I did forget a public comment. Do we have any public comment, Steph? Thank you so much. Questions? Trustee Ruckler? We're going to do two questions max.
Thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Freeze. Is it possible to put a link in this document directing how the funds are spent? I'm, I'm following up on Ms. Griswold, her comments, just to be clear. And she wanted to know if there could be a link in the document as to how the funds are spent.
So the engineer, engineering report will include the capital expenditures for the 24, 25 school year once the report is put together. So, so this is to create the engineering report first and then come back to you and that'll be included in the report.
Okay, so if I understood correctly, I'm sorry, you're a little soft. It's hard to hear tonight for whatever reason. There will be a link to how funds are being spent.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is, she wants to know if there's plans to change the percentage and calculations related to public use access to reflect the current state. Or conversely, will the district open campuses in alignment with what is stated in the report?
We are currently reviewing that information with, with legal counsel. And when the engineering report is put together, we hope to bring back a better clarification on how the allocation and access is provided to school grounds.
Okay, thank you. And if there is the opportunity for one more question, I do have one more. Thank you.
Thank you, board. Any other questions? No? Okay. We are, Trustee Ruckler?
Thank you. If I may continue, Ms. Griswold also wanted to understand the special benefit and if there was going to be a change in order to better reflect the special benefits of the community. Thank you.
Yes, that question is really the same response. So we're working with legal right now to better define how the funds are allocated and meet the requirement of the, of the MRAD.
Great, thank you very much. I'm complete.
Thank you so very much. Okay, board? Yes, sir.
Do you want a motion?
Absolutely, sir.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2324-59, directing preparation of the annual engineers report for the Maintenance and Recreation Assessment District, or MRAD.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, any comments? Seeing none, go to the vote. Trustee Pau Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Ruckler?
Ruckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee, I'm so sorry, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm a yes. Thank you, everyone. We are now moving to our last item, which is our pulled consent item, C7. Trustee Ruckler, you pulled this item. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. I know there's not a lot of time, so I just want to point out that there are many contracts that are coming with dates from September. Are these, have, have these started? Or if they're being, if they're starting now, or how are they prorated?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Ruckler. I too noticed that as well and did some researching. I'm not quite sure exactly what is happening with the date other than I'm assuming that the contracts were created earlier in the year and weren't completed until this point. But what I have verified is that none of these contracts have been approved for purchase orders. The system that we have, when a site or a department applies for a contract, they create a purchase requisition. We cannot pay out on any expense until a purchase requisition has been converted to a purchase order. I have a system that after the school board approves contracts, it is only then that I approve the personnel, I'm sorry, approve the purchase requisition so that they can be converted and the funds can be made available. So even though you see these predated contracts, I can assure you with 100% certainty because I looked at all of them, none of them have we made any funds available to pay. So if indeed services did start in departments or sites, people are working without pay and without approval. And that is something I need to research site by site. But I can assure you that our process is we don't make funds available until we have school board approval.
Okay, thank you. And then I wanted to talk about one specific contract, which seems really funky to me. And this is one for high expectations, which is supposed to create family engagement plans for the 26 community schools. And what it says, if you dig down deep into the weeds in the, in the back, it says that it is going to provide one virtual coaching session for each of the 26 community schools. And the cost is $1,450 per hour, not to exceed $225,000. So first of all, if it's one session times 26 schools, that does not add up to $225,000. I like this math. So if I was the spender, first of all, I'm going to find a new career because this is what I'm going to do to give a $1,450 an hour. The second is that the math doesn't add up. And then there's got to be more to this contract than just a one, you know, session, virtual session on, on family engagement plans. uh, you know, uh, session, virtual session on, on family engagement plans.
I understand your questions. I think we need to take these back to Martine Blake. Uh, the work of the, uh, community engagement department is sometimes guided by consortiums. This is one such contract that I believe is a collaborative with other groups that involves training. Uh, so I think I'd need to directly, uh, reach out to Ms. Blake to find out exactly what's going on with that costing. I agree it is, um, astronomical.
Just excuse me for one second. I, I don't mean to interrupt. We're running a little short of time. I'm going to make sure that I hear from, you're finished? Okay, thank you. Trustee Chris, trustee Phillips?
I want to move, move this item except the contract that trustee Reckler just spoke about, so that one can come back.
Okay, is there a second?
One second, ma'am.
Okay, we've got, uh, duly motion and properly second. Okay, uh, CBO Moses, thank you. Let's go. Any comments? No? Seeing none? Great. Okay, let's go to the vote. Um, trustee Pal Car, your vote, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Um, may we get thirty seconds on the clock? Please, everybody, you have thirty seconds. You have thirty seconds to make a comment. We have done great work tonight. Here we go. Trustee Phillips, your comment, sir? Hold on one second, thirty seconds.
So for feedback, I know, I will take thirty seconds. For feedback, um, I, I do want to say that you did a good job chairing the meeting tonight. Um, and one of the things that I would like to see put on the board agenda is a discussion about our interim cabinet members. Um, they've been in those positions for some time. Um, and I would like us to have a discussion about making those folks permanent. That's my, my closing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else has a thirty second comment? Anyone else has a thirty, anyone else have a thirty second comment? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Procedurally, at the last meeting, it was confusing. It was confusing to me. It was confusing to the panel community about having a report out in the middle of the meeting, uh, of closed session. Um, I asked a few questions. I still haven't had them all answered. I'd like our attorney to come and so that we can notice the meeting that we're going to talk about reporting out from closed session or what happened. Get some clarity about it so that we can be clean and the community, uh, understands. Thank you.
Thank you. I have trustee Christian, thirty seconds. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, uh, it'll say to everybody, you know, it's been a good evening, uh, being here. Uh, three things I just want to point out. Uh, I want to, uh, see that educational workforce housing at some point come on the agenda. And then also, um, you know, community schools is a big highlight, which we got to push and make happen. And then, um, and then also, uh, as Zaland Harris talked about, uh, Swahili school, I'd like to see, you know, that, you know, comes on the agenda as well. And so, um, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much clerk Gonzalez Hoy, thirty seconds.
Yeah, thank you, President Smith Folds. I just want to say, I mean, I think that the meetings have been going really well. Um, I think that the last meeting, um, we followed everything like we always do. The only mistake that was made was the report out of that one item, uh, that we thought didn't need to be reported out. It didn't need to be reported out. It just happened. There was an accident. Uh, otherwise, everything else was followed as it was. And I've been responding to all the emails explaining that for closed session items, you have to come before a closed session. That was telling people, that people had that day. I know they got different mixed messages from board members, but you know, we have a procedure and I thought it was done fine. So, um, I mean, I think that people are not happy with the outcome, which is different than like, we're not following our process. You know, we actually followed our process, so. That's it. Thank you, President Smith Folds.
Thank you, everyone. I do not have anything to say. Um, I'm going to give you your time back, reclaim your time. Thank you so much. Thank you for staying an extra thirty minutes. Uh, staff, thank you community for staying thirty minutes. Oh, I do have, look, I am saying something. It's a hot mess. Anyway, it's almost eleven o'clock. I'm adjourning this meeting at ten fifty-nine. Our next scheduled meeting will be held on April the tenth at, uh, at Dejounte Middle School. Thank you.